Good evening. Welcome to the July 11, 2023 City Commission Meeting. We will start off with Sheri.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. If you are attending this meeting via Zoom, please ensure you are muted and your video is off when you are not actively participating in the meeting. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. If you have any trouble, you can send a chat, and all chats go directly to the meeting host. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and Cable Channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, those attending in person should approach the podium to indicate they wish to speak. Those participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. Please leave your virtual hand raised until you are called on. Participants will be called upon in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. Please state your name before speaking, and all comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sheri. So we'll start off with the approval of the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Is there any changes to the meeting?
Mayor, I'd like to see if anyone else is interested in moving Main Agenda Item Number One before the work session?
I would be. Any other?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I move to move Agenda Item Number One before the work session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We got a first and a second, all in favor? Aye. It passes four to zero. Okay, so we'll move on to Item B, which is Recognition and Proclamations. And we have one tonight. We have for Lauren Henning, Lauren Henderson, excuse me. Go ahead. Sorry about that, Lauren. So is there anybody here to speak on behalf of, or is Lauren here?
Lauren is here.
I think you're there. Come on up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Thad Holcomb, and I will keep within three minutes, but it's going to be difficult when I'm talking about Lauren Henderson. I came in 1991 and was the campus minister for ECM, and after a while, we became a covenant, that is, a relationship with Quakers. We already had Friends Meeting, and Lauren Henderson was an important part of that. I just want to say that I always remember the understanding of justice, which has been made by Professor Howard. That is really justice is love made public. And I think Lauren Henderson has epitomized this, as most of you know, and you have said that in the proclamation. I'm going to be giving him a card, but the card needs to be stacked with inserts to indicate all the people that appreciate what he has done. Those without housing, those who came to him for counsel, his patience, his ability to listen. He is the epitome of justice, for I think he is a man that carries compassion on his sleeve and has all his life. And so it's, I'm very pleased that the city has agreed to proclaim him in such significant way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Thad. Thank you. All right. I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas Lauren Henderson, as early as age 12, believed in the concept of due unto others and has spent his lifetime devoted to helping others. And Lauren graduated from the University of Kansas in 1961 and served his country for six years in the U.S. Navy. And whereas for the next 30 years, while living in Washington, D.C., Lauren worked with social and political organizations while volunteering in local soup kitchens. And whereas Lauren returned to Lawrence and served the Redemptorist Social Service Center in Kansas City, Missouri, after 10 years, she retired for the first time at age 65. And whereas in 2004, along with other volunteers, Lauren founded and served as Director of the Lawrence Community Shelter to provide support, case management, and hope to over 500 unhoused individuals a year. He retired for a second time in 2014 at the age of 75. And whereas after five years of retirement, Lauren founded Dare, a drop-in and rest center which addresses the needs of those in our community who are struggling and in need of support. Whereas words do not do justice to Lauren's influence, career, as well as his unselfish years of service, as he prepares to retire for yet the third time in July at the age of 85. So therefore, I, Lisa Larson, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, along with my fellow commissioners, hereby extend our sincerest congratulations to Lauren Henderson. Thank you so much for your service to our community. Lauren, I do want to ask, is this retirement going to stick?
This one's going to stick, I think. I feel it now, anyway.
Good for you. Good for you.
I just briefly want to say thank you. I've been up here many times, but somehow it feels a little different tonight. And I can only say thank you. I wanted to briefly talk about what all of this work has meant for me. I mean, it is something that has been my life goal to do, as you have recognized in the proclamation. But, you know, I'm not the only one. One of my favorite quotes is, although the world is full of suffering, it is full also of the overcoming of it. And this is by Helen Keller. And we're all in this together. And I want to say thank you to the city for the work that it's doing to develop a Department of Homelessness and the many other agencies that work on homelessness from a different aspect, family promise, and Willow, and et cetera. I mean, the city is full of good people doing good things and trying their, our best to work on this issue. So I just want to say thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we will now move on to general public comment. The public is allowed to speak on issues or items that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. Comments should be limited to issues and items germane to the business of the governing body. The commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Each person will be limited to three minutes. We'll let the crowd kind of move out from here.
Are we ready?
Just one minute, Joe. Just hang for a second, Joe. Okay, I think we're ready. Go ahead.
My name is Joe. I come to you wearing a tinfoil hat. I'm one of the minority for the last three years. And I'm asking you, is it better to have a tinfoil hat or to be wearing a blindfold? Because I think many of us, many, many, many of us still have a blindfold on. And I'm talking about primarily the damage that was done to our community during the COVID lockdown. I can't think of one thing that was done correctly. And for the most part, it all goes back to your oath of office. Your oath was to defend the Constitution and the state Constitution. And in my opinion, none of you have done that. And I would ask you, why? Why hasn't that been done? I mean, you tend to follow the mantra that's handed down to you from the politics and the bureaucrats. You're not following the Constitution. There was no law that said you lock down people and take away their livelihood to support their family. And we have the media that constantly was telling everybody that ivermectin was bad, it's horse paste. Well, now that the numbers are coming in, the U.S. has a population of 4.2% of the world population, but we had 16% of the death loss. Countries that use ivermectin and hydrochloroquine, their death loss was one two-hundredth of ours. And all I'm asking is, why don't we go back to the Constitution? I mean, two, three weeks ago, we had the trans community in here. That's fine. But we shouldn't be dividing people. If you look at the Fourteenth Amendment, they talk about everybody is equal. It doesn't matter what color you are. It doesn't matter what race you are. But the bureaucrats and the politicians continually want to divide people. We're all Americans. We should be acting like Americans. And all I'm asking is, I don't understand why you haven't followed the Constitution. And I, for one, am not going to vote for anybody that violates the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Johnson, and I'm here with the No SB 180 in Lawrence campaign. On behalf of our campaign, I'd like to thank the members of the Lawrence City Commission for encouraging the city's legal team to work with us to implement a safe haven ordinance for transgender nonconforming Lawrenceans. We look forward to seeing this ordinance become an agenda item for the City Commission meeting in early August and to continue our efforts with the City of Lawrence to protect marginalized populations. It is no secret that the rights of trans Americans are in jeopardy right now. Attacks on trans people have resulted in fear and despair for all of us. I often wonder when I'm going to lose access to my health care and what the effects of legalized discrimination against trans people will have on my future and the future of trans Kansans. With this in mind, it is vital, now more than ever, to take a proactive stance against future legislative efforts that will further harm trans people. The No SB 180 in Lawrence campaign is grateful for all the Lawrence residents and officials who have acknowledged this real threat to trans safety and who stand with us in our fight against transphobia. We continue to urge not only the City Commission, but all of our neighbors and community members, trans or not, to be vigilant and determined in our mission against discrimination and bigotry. The No SB 180 in Lawrence campaign has drawn the support of over 1,000 people in Lawrence, and together we will make certain that Lawrence becomes and remains a sanctuary for trans people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to remind everyone that this is an agenda item.
Oh, it is?
It's on the city manager's report.
Sorry about that. I didn't, I forgot about that. Sorry. Thank you, Sheri.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Stumblingbear, and I kind of wanted to share a positive story I had, or experience I had recently. I was in my kitchen cooking, and all of a sudden the dump truck was coming through our apartment complex, picking up the garbage. And all of a sudden, I hear the loud horn going from the truck. And I remember there were some young of the, young boys playing outside, so I go out to look because I'm thinking, damn it, these kids have kind of been causing problems in our neighborhood. I'm going to have to go out there and talk to them. They're standing on the curb across from one of the dumpsters. The dump truck is, the gentlemen are picking up the dumpster, putting it to the back, and the boys are standing up front cheering, woo, yeah. Then the driver of the dump truck blows that horn again, and the little boy in the middle, seven years old, mimic, he's jumping up and down. I can hear him from my kitchen window. He's cheering so loud. And I couldn't help but think of the proclamation for Dagan Corinta back in January. Mayor Larson, you're the one who read that one. And one of the comments was in that proclamation was, he was a special friend to the Solid Waste Division, and he will not be, you know, he will be sorely missed. And I thought about how the garbage truck driver and those workers were kind of continuing that outreach with our young community members. And I wanted to hear, wanted to share that positive story here today because there's a lot of people who will get up here, and they can point to every problem, and they can have no problem going on for three minutes about those problems. But anybody can point out a problem. It's another thing to look at and see the positives in our community and the work being done by our city staff in reaching out and making good relations with our community members of all ages and all races, because two of these young boys are Latino, and the other one is a young white boy. And they were really cool, really responsive. And I would hope more people in our community can see these interactions and want to applaud them and want to help share these stories, because we are a community of love, caring, consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers, and I'm going to point out a problem. Last week, well, I guess it was, I mean, prior to last week, the plastic bag ban had come up. And then y'all seemed to show support for it. And I rewatched it, and I believe Commissioner Sellers even said Lawrence is ready for this. And then you approved it with staff that come back with some changes. And then last meeting during the consent agenda, the Fink and Sellers voted against it. And it's just, I don't think that was fair, because it was on the consent agenda. And prior, you had voiced support for it. So the supporters weren't here because they thought you were all were going to pass it. So they weren't here to voice why we need it. And also Larson was gone, so I feel like people took advantage of the situation and shot it down. And I just think that's pretty crappy. And also, another thing I wanted to point out is, I read a few weeks ago in the newspaper that the schools are getting like 500,000 to combat smoking. And I'm just wondering, can we not enforce our smoking ban since we're, I mean, last meeting, I believe Sellers said the reason she was voting against the plastic ban because she was concerned to the cost of businesses, yet this, this smoking ban enforcement of them selling to people under 21, that I believe that's costing them over 30,000 a year. So if the schools are now got 500,000 to combat smoking, which they didn't have that when you passed it, does that mean we should still be passing on the cost of enforcement to our small businesses? I mean, I think, I think saving the environment is more important than stopping 18- to 20-year-olds from smoking. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Hi.
Hello. My name is Tron, and thank you for letting me speak.
Sure.
Actually, a while back, wrote a letter to you guys that I was intending to, like, deliver. I've just been procrastinating lately. However, let me start the letter. So, listen to me closely. I would never imply that the city in those in charge, helping the, in charge of helping the homeless have failed us in helping. They helped with the homeless a lot, partnering with nearby businesses like Johnny's Tavern. They have spent generous amounts of money on the homeless, thanks to thoughtful, brainstormed ideas of these businesses like Johnny Tavern's, and generous time and money from the city. And we rest assured that Johnny's makes their customers more happy and can live the life of patriotic and patriotic capitalism. Our ineffective windbreakers and crowd-controlling fences and unnecessary diverted roads, all designated for segregation, all in the false pretense of nonexistent safety, is that most not very thoughtful. I can rest and assured and rest in ignorance and bliss amidst the chaos, knowing ever so blissfully, the city and nearby businesses have our best interests in mind. So it is mostly, so it is mostly important that I thank you collectively for all your efforts in making our problem seemingly disappear. Non-site, non-mine, we now have more tax revenues paid by nearby businesses for more important things. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening. Nancy Snow. My remarks will mainly address continued abuses at the North Lawrence Shelter site. These issues take on special urgency in light of the city manager's budget, which I will not discuss during the open commentary. I saw with horror that the city plans to continue trying to provide services, I use the term loosely, to the unhoused in Lawrence despite its many months of ongoing failures at the cost of people's lives and well-being. It is clear that leadership is not up to the task. The head of the Housing Initiatives Division is well over her head and is overwhelmed. She should be downgraded to Site Manager or something else she could handle. Preferably, she should be removed from housing altogether. Another individual should go back to Parks and Rec full-time, if not dismissed for incompetence. I have contacted the entire commission about the arrest record of the alleged site supervisor, and as is typical, have not received a response. The man has been arrested five times, including for forgery, which is a felony. He has also been charged with obstructive justice, sorry, obstructing justice and with violating a domestic protection order. The latter is especially concerning, given the numbers of vulnerable women at the camp. Both men have been guilty of gratuitous cruelty toward the unhoused, though the site supervisor did perform an act of kindness yesterday. And I have sent you all emails documenting these things, and I posted my public comment with some documentation from photographs that are in PDF files. ADA violations were finally corrected when the ADA compliance officer visited camp and repeated previous instructions, which had not been carried out. It is unclear that fire hazards have been fully corrected. The ADA violations, which were egregious, as well as the hazards, would not have occurred had the mayor not deemed it necessary to spend $15,500 of taxpayers' money to build a new road on the south side of camp. The only beneficiaries are the owner of Johnny's Tavern and presumably the mayor, who will profit from his support. Ostensibly, the new road and relocation of the city trailer was to prevent easy access to meth dealers and sex traffickers, but this could have been done had workers at the city trailer, when positioned on the north side, A, kept the door open, B, been vigilant, and C, watched security cameras in real time. $15,500 would have been saved, and much grief would have been prevented. In light of the continued ineptitude of the city in running the site, as well as the failure to provide adequate mental health services and housing, one can only conclude that a special housing division run by the city to the tune of a multimillion-dollar budget will fail. It's time for the city to be responsible, as well as responsive to citizens' concerns.
Next.
Jennifer Adams. I came to talk about how out there at the site, what's going on. Burt Nash is trying, but they're failing badly. They're not helping people. If anything, they're hurting people. They're not following through with their promises. I myself was put in for a voucher. I got it. The house I was looking at already got rented. Now they pulled my voucher. And I don't know why. I was supposed to have till September 1st. I don't understand what is trying to be done out there, but it's failing miserably. People are really getting hurt out there. There's one that's a disabled lady. She can't even get out of the camp on her own. If there's a fire or something, she's not getting out. There's no access for her at all in a wheelchair. These mats that they put down, they're not doing the trick. She can't get in to take a shower, to use the restroom. Half the time, there's not somebody even there to unlock the restroom. It's a nightmare out there. They moved the camp, moved the support site to the other side, and now they finally had to take out the picnic tables because it created an area down there where nobody's watching, and that's where all the partying is being done. To the point, I've been complaining and complaining, and it's still going on. Something needs to change out there before somebody really is dead.
Any other general public comment on items that aren't on the agenda? Hi.
Hi, my name is Elliot Pollock, and I want to talk about just, I've noticed kind of a recent trend at a lot of these meetings where we're very reactive and not proactive when it comes to preventing bigotry-fueled policy that may come from Topeka or Washington. Recent examples obviously being SB 180.
Sir, we're going to, the SB 180 is on later on in the agenda?
It's not specifically about SB 180. I'm just highlighting an example.
Okay.
The abortion amendment back in August. And I think our best tool for fighting this kind of agenda or these kind of policies is expanding accessibility for voting. And I know that this is not a novel idea by any means, but it doesn't seem like the City of Lawrence has done everything in its power to ensure that all voting-eligible persons have as much accessible, as much access as possible to being able to cast a ballot. A couple of specific examples I want to highlight. Polling stations in Lawrence and the surrounding area, of which I believe there are 77, are open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., which is only the bare minimum as outlined in Kansas state law. Kansas state law does allow for these polling places to be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. A couple extra hours may not seem like much, but every additional amount of accessibility that we give to people in Lawrence helps ensure that more people in Lawrence are able to vote, and we can use that to help push back against any kind of bigoted laws which may be promoted by what you might call the tyranny of the minority. Because I think that it's pretty reasonable to say that a lot of people are not in favor of a lot of these laws, and our best tool to fight back against it is by expanding access to voting. Another thing, another proposal I have that I think would be within the city's power is to expand the free bus service. I do understand that for 2023, it's free, but we haven't necessarily committed to keeping that free in 2023. to keeping that free in 2024. So either keeping it free for the whole year, or at the very least, making sure that buses are free for the entire advanced voting period. It does seem to be the case that it is free on Election Day, or it historically has been, even if it's not official policy. But I think at the very least, we should expand the free bus system so that it can deliver or transport people to and from the polling places for free for the entire, I think it's like a 20-day advanced voting block period ahead of any election. So basically, just in short, I want the city of Lawrence and the commissioners, I'm calling on you, to do everything in your power to ensure that every voting-eligible person in Lawrence has as much possible access to being able to vote, so that they can cast a ballot. And any cost I imagine that this might encore, just an increase in running polling stations for an extra couple of hours, that would more than be offset by the gains that we would get by ensuring that we have policy in Lawrence that favors our own residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Elliot.
Any other general public comment?
Before I begin, is there anything related to the CPRB on the agenda? I haven't had time to review it completely. No? All right. You have another compromised board member on the CPRB. I took some papers in. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on this. I'm Lawrence Accountability, and you can see all these details because I put them out publicly for the world to see, because it's just absolutely incredible. Mayor Larson appointed, I believe Mayor Larson appointed Brenda Clary to the CPRB, if I'm not mistaken. That person is conflicted because she has a client that needs testimony from a member of the CPRB who is biased, and Ms. Clary refuses to address that. That's a big issue, and you guys have now put a lawyer in the kiddy for ethics issues because of your stupid reactive policies, just like the man said just a minute ago. You need to be proactive instead of reactive. You're constantly reacting. And as long as you keep reacting, I'm going to keep coming in here and breaking your little toys. Because I can find the records. You may not think people are talking. I got people in every department in this city talking to me right now. Word's gotten out. The jig is up, guys. You better start cleaning it up. When you appointed Brenda Clary to that board, that was right after, if everybody will remember, that was right after Jordan Bickford brought to a head the one jaywalking ticket. You see, I keep intricate records, guys. That was the month after Jordan Bickford had brought that to a head and demanded an executive session from our chief, who had no case file on a complaint that he claimed he investigated. That's right. And you all let it happen without a word. Now we have a situation where you have a biased police officer who supports, you all remember Brad Williams, drug recognition expert, I call them drug whisperers, because they can find drugs where they don't always exist. And he was using that to target young women. So much so that one of his supervisor's phone numbers actually ended up on the bathroom wall at a stripper house, saying, "If you have problems with Brad Williams, call his boss." But you guys all let it happen, and you let the police hire him from the Sheriff's Department to the city. He continued his behavior, and he got his certification revoked. Skyler Richardson does not care what CPOs said. He doesn't care what the facts said. He doesn't care what that state agency determined when they revoked that officer's certification. Brad's numbers were solid. His accuracy rates were perfect. That's bias, guys. He's completely ignorant of the state judgment that was passed, the state that he has to answer to and operate under. Again, you keep playing government like this, I'm going to keep coming in here breaking your toys. I broke your CPRB. I'm going to break your damned work group if you don't fix it now.
Any other general public comment? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered, oh, I'm sorry, we've got Zoom, Zoom, yeah. Sorry about that.
I just wanted to at least check.
Well, I gotta get back. Sorry, Sheri. Okay. Nobody on Zoom? Okay, we're back now.
I have one on Zoom.
One?
Paul Denzer. This is on consent agenda. If you're pulling, if you're pulling ordinance 9991 off the consent agenda for discussion, I'll discuss it then. Otherwise, I'd appreciate it now.
We'll address that here in just a minute on the consent agenda, okay? There'll be an opportunity for that, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, Paul? All right, so we can go on the consent agenda now. Items on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak on an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Are there any items that any of the commissioners want to pull off the consent agenda? No? Okay, any members of the audience, of the public, want to pull something off the consent agenda? Jane?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item E9I.
D?
E as in egg.
I think it's, isn't it D? It's D. It's D9I that you're wanting.
It is D9I. We had an item that got removed, so it changed the number.
Oh, thank you.
It's D9I.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane. Okay, go ahead. Any other, any other members of the public want to pull something? D2? D2? The, let me look at it.
All the board and commissioners?
Okay, boards and commissions, okay. Any, you want A through E?
I'll take one three-minute period for all of them.
Okay. Any other items? Anybody on Zoom want to pull an item? Paul?
D7B.
D7B?
That's ordinance 9991.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Any other, anybody else on Zoom? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the commission, so we've got.
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of D2, D7B, and D9I.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed. It passes four to zero. So we'll start with, let's go ahead and start with D2A, the first one. A through E.
Okay, I pulled D2. I don't need to pull them individually. This is regarding all your boards and commissions. What you have created over the last three years is somebody who is watching you like a hawk. And learning, learning about how your processes work, how these boards work, how Burt Nash spends money, these kind of things. I have the time. I'm self-employed, guys. I got no kids. I got the time. Apparently, y'all think I have no friends, so I got that time, too. I'm learning. And I'm going to start pulling every one of these and breaking these boards, too. I'm not playing any more games. You guys ignored me when I came in here and brought a legitimate complaint about the police behavior on this street, and you treated me like I was some crank. Almost all of you did. There's somebody in this room who treats me with a little respect, and I appreciate that person. It ain't you, buddy. But you guys ignored it. This whole city ignored it and excused it. You let an officer go hang out for two years and go work for somebody else because you ignored me. I'm going to pull these board minutes. I'm going to start watching these meetings. They're recorded on YouTube. You make it too convenient for us. I'm going to start pulling these, and I'm going to start analyzing everything you do, and digging into the deep weeds on it, like I told Brenda Clary last night. And when I get down into the deep weeds, you're really not going to like me being there. All you have to do is straighten up, dig down into this city, and start controlling things like a commission should. I'm tired of being told that a commission is not supposed to reach down into city business. That's what we elected you for. If you're not able to reach down into city business, we, the people, have no power in this city. It's all over there. That's why we've elected you, is to reach down into city business and help fix things. And you're not doing it. You're literally telling me that you're prevented from doing that. I'm tired of hearing about it.
Okay, this is just an item to receive, correct?
That's right.
So we don't need to vote on it?
You do.
But we do need to open it up for public comment?
Yes.
Any public comment on this item? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
All right, then we will move on to D7B. That's Paul.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Can I share my screen?
We should be able to now.
Thank you. Paul Denzer, property owner at 4910 Corporate Center Drive. Just wanted to put a face on, a face and a picture on the property that is, is subject to this condemnation action. Eight slides here, and a quick, quick comment. First, we responded promptly, and I think we're engaged with, with Mr. Walker since February, and, and kind of working through the issues that came up with this right-of-way acquisition requirement. First slide, this is the property. We have the frontage on Wacarosa, and the corner at 18th and Wacarosa is going to be subject to the right-of-way acquisition, the entire, can you see the hand moving?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So that entire corner is going to be lost, lost. Apparently, we have a, you're probably familiar with this beautiful, well-maintained, well-landscaped property. This is an overhead aerial view. This is the right-of-way acquisition. The orange, the red line is the existing right-of-way. The orange is the new right-of-way. The green is the construction easement. Side by side, the right-of-way acquisition and construction is going to tear out all of these 20-year-old, just mature landscaping along Wacarosa, and, and seven trees here at the corner. All of, all of this landscaping will be, will be demolished and scraped from the property, and the setback will, will move back, starting about this point, and taking the entire corner. This is a view from north to, from south to north of the nature of the trees. They're all red oak species. And this is from looking, looking to the south, the trees that'll be removed, and, and all of these evergreens that are up adjacent to the corner of the property to, to allow for the roundabout. I have three issues that I've asked, that I've been working with, with Mr. Walker prior to the introduction of this ordinance, which then turned it over to attorneys, and, and it's just turned, you know, by nature of that, it's, it's more of an adversarial discussion. Our concerns are, one, when the, when the freedom is widened, the right-of-way is taken, then our property goes into a non-conforming status under the zoning laws. We no longer meet the setback requirements by definition. I was, I was provided with a copy of an ordinance section that pertains to some prior action on six.
Sir?
Yes?
Paul?
Yes?
That's your time. I tell you, Sheri, since he just wanted to pull it, I'll give him some more time, okay? Yeah. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I'll close in 60 seconds, I hope. Three issues. One, the zoning concerns that I have. We've asked for an unambiguous confirmation that the taking of our property and reduction of our setbacks will not put us in a non-conforming status. We're getting pushed back on getting unambiguous language. If, if, if the city, if the attorney that you hired can't, or the city attorney's not comfortable with that, I would ask that your commission consider a companion ordinance that does that, as it has done apparently with other, other streets in the city where, where similar rights of way have been, have been taken. The, the other issue is, the city is taking the entire corner of the property where we would have a monument sign, and we've asked for confirmation that we can, in this slideshow, put a monument sign in this now reduced area of lawn that we're going to have between our parking lot and the street. And, and, and we're not, and we're getting pushed back that, they can't, the city can't agree to that. So I would ask your consideration of those issues as we move forward, and, and hopefully amicably deal with this issue, and for the benefit of widening the road. We understand we're going to lose property in the process, but I don't want to have a non-conforming property at, at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I did have one clarification. I have a question for you, Paul. So you were looking at two different items, or I thought you had a third item that you wanted to have addressed?
The third, the, the third item related to the street tree and the master street tree plan, and we got some feedback today that, that proposed language in our, in a letter agreement was going to be acceptable. But if it's not, I, and as a contingency, I want to, just like the zoning, when the city tears out, the city's tearing out 19 trees, as it, when it tears out those 19 trees that we've, that our development put in and have been maintained for the last 20 years, I don't want to find us in non-compliance with the ordinance, with the city's street tree ordinance now, because the city tore them out. We won't have, we won't have the same area to put in the trees on the corner that are being torn out. We've asked that the city, through this street project, replace one for one, recognizing they're replacing 20-year mature trees with a, with a two-inch caliber or one and a half inch caliber starters. But, but we don't, we don't want to find ourselves in violation of the street tree ordinance as a result, same as the zoning. So all, those are my three issues.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Does anybody, any of the commissioners have any questions for Paul, or question?
I'm with staff.
So can we hear from staff on this?
I get you, Commissioners. This is Jake Vaughn, Engineering Program Manager with MSO. I can speak to any of the.
Okay. Oops. We lost you, Jake. You back? Jake, go ahead.
Oh, I apologize if there's a lapse there. I can speak to any of the engineering topics regarding the project, but I'll probably defer to Randy on all legal items.
Okay. Sorry, I guess I missed part of that, Jake.
Randy for the legal item?
Oh, Randy, okay.
I know there were negotiations going on between our outside attorney and the owner of the property, and that there were some discussions regarding the setback and where it was going to be measured from, and then also related to the location of the monument sign. And the way, as they were negotiating, the draft version that we saw was basically requiring us to change the law through that agreement. So we offered new language and wanted different language, and anyway, there was an impasse. And so, anyway, we're just couldn't reach an agreement regarding, you know, paying out before we went to condemnation, so that's why the ordinance is before you. We can still negotiate these types of things, but that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll take it to public comment. Anybody from the audience, the public, have any comments on this? If not, we'll go to Zoom.
Does that, open it up for me again?
No, you've already, you've already had your time, Paul.
Thank you.
Nice try. Okay. So we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion at this point. So, any discussion on this?
I mean, certainly, I appreciate, you know, his comments, but there's plenty of time in the, in the process, through the condemnation process, to work that out, and, and, you know, obviously encourage both sides to keep talking about that, and, and get that figured out. And, you know, if not, the courts can always resolve that, or we could resolve it. But I think this is just moving the process forward, and we had to get this moving so we could eventually build the product. So I'm going to support this resolution, but I do think it's, you know, something that can be worked through during the process.
I am a little curious about the trees. I don't know if that would be Jake or not. Like, were these trees originally put in by the city, or required by the builder developer to put in? Does anybody know? Does anybody know?
I believe that, this is Jake Baldwin, Engineering Program Manager. I believe they went in with the development and Mr. Denzer could speak to that, I'm sure.
They, they were put in by the developer and maintained by the developer for 20.
Okay. Any other discussion? I will support this, but I do want to strongly encourage additional discussions with the, between the parties and continue to negotiate and come to a satisfactory agreement.
We will do that.
Okay.
So I'd move to adopt on second and final reading, Order Number 991 condemning certain real property interests needed for the improvement of Wacarosa Drive and authorizing attorneys for the city to file an eminent domain petition in Douglas County District Court.
Second?
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Passes four to zero. Onto the last item on our consent agenda is item D 9I. Jane?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm Jane Eldridge and I'm here to ask you to defer this item for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think that the consent agenda item, which actually asks you to approve part of the budget outside of the rest of your budget system, is inappropriate. I think asking that all $1.2 million be spent this year and next, when the current CIP has it spread over a four-year period, is simply wrong. I know that there, you, you may make the argument that, well, we approved $1.2 million, so what's the difference whether we do it in two years or four years? The difference is the budget you approve is an annual budget with a CIP. And when you're changing the CIP, all of us in the community deserve a public meeting when our tax dollars are being spent in a year that is different than the one that was approved. Secondly, and perhaps even more importantly, as far as I'm concerned, is that there have been no public hearings on the use of this property at Holcomb Park. Some of us requested that the city, excuse me, that the school district 497 have a meeting to tell us what it is, why they're selling the land and what they anticipate it will, what will happen to it. They declined to do that. We talked with the director of tenants to homeowners and she very graciously said, we'll do it when it's appropriate, can't do it now. We are asking you to require the tenants to homeowners to have a meeting with the public, particularly have a meeting with the neighborhood. As you may have noted in your staff report on page 15, there is a plan for neighborhood association engagement. Not all of the people who live around Holcomb Park and who will live near this property are in a neighborhood association. Some of them have absolutely no idea what's going on. And the staff report says resident input will be sought and considered when finalizing site plans. As I'm sure you all know, site plans are generally presented following zoning decisions. Zoning decisions are the ones that will be made regarding the use of the property, the number of dwelling units, and they'll be considering any other instruments. In your proposed contract that you're being asked to move, to approve tonight, the terms in here can say that these will serve certain households only.
Thank you, Jane. Well, I'm going to give her, because she brought it up, so we're going to give her more time.
Thank you. The indications and particularly about indicating on, in section three of that proposed agreement is that tenants to homeowners will ask on its official letterhead for the first payment of the money that it has contracted to pay in 2023. That's the amount of $350,000. And that they will agree with the city that the second payment will be made after January 1, 2004. By then you will have approved your budget, including your capital improvement budget. Then I would like to also refer to section four because they are, tenants to homeowners is to provide a final report to the city within 90 days of completion of the project. The project is designed, is defined as an acquisition of property and yet this description refers to the number of units subsidized, the number of individuals and households. So does this commit the city to paying for complete development of the project? It would appear so, and I don't know if that's your intention at this time, but it does not appear to be timely. I think that we are entitled to the kind of thing that developers are usually asked for when they're developing property, which is please meet with the neighbors, please let them know who you are and what you're planning. We believe that we're entitled to that. We ask that you have that occur before you approve any funding whatsoever. We also ask that you approve the funding as part of the normal budget process with the normal public hearings. And I want to say, most importantly, we are very, we, I am very proud of tenants to homeowners. They do a great job and I don't want anybody to misunderstand these comments, that I have anything but the highest respect for them. We simply want the public process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Any questions for Jane? Okay, thank you. How about, can we hear from staff? I think Leah, is Leah here?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Leah Roslin, Affordable Housing Administrator, and I am joined by Rebecca Buford, Executive Director of Tenants to Homeowners. Rebecca has planned some remarks to go over regarding the development or the, the planned acquisition of the property. As included in your agenda packet, right now, the information regards to what's being planned for development are all tentative. That's best estimation where we are at this point in time before the land has even been acquired. As noted in the agenda packet document, neighborhood engagement will be critical and vital to the success of this project and is absolutely going to be a planned component. It is premature to do vigorous neighborhood engagement before the property is even acquired by tenants to homeowners and would result in them spending extra time and resources prematurely. However, tenants to homeowners has started reaching out to those neighborhood associations and Rebecca can speak a little bit more about what they're thinking for the development and what's been done so far with neighborhood engagement and what is being planned moving forward.
Okay.
Hi, Commissioners. This is Rebecca, Rebecca Buford, Executive Director of Tenants to Homeowners. And I really appreciate Jane's comments and I think there, I really want to extend that there's no trying to get out of neighborhood discussion. It's just that unlike for-profit developers, we have to also often ask grant funding for acquisition of a property. Most for-profit developers will buy the property and then they'll start the development process. We are asking for funding to acquire the property because site control is absolutely required from any of the grant funding that we generally get to leverage and bring in for development. And as Jane asked, we don't expect the city to pay for that development. We expect to bring that in ourselves. And if we can't bring it in, then we'll give the city back their money, sell the property, do something else with it. It will be for affordable housing project, but it's really impossible without spending thousands of dollars before site control, which as a good steward of public and private donated money, I do not do. I'm not going to get an architect to draw plans on a site I do not own. So we are asking you to give us the opportunity to buy this site, knowing a couple of things, that we build houses in trust, 88% are single-family. That is our plan for this, is name, is family housing, affordable workforce housing for the people that can't afford market prices of, right now, the average is 338,000. Most of Lawrence, so there's the workforce we're talking about and we're looking at single-family, not the right picture of multi-family. Our development code doesn't even allow us to do that in this district. So again, if we tried to change that, the zoning application would allow for plenty of public comment on that and input. But we really want to do single-family development for families to prevent people from leaving our school districts. We're seeing families that can afford housing here moving to Topeka and Kansas City and that's why our neighborhood schools are closing. And we believe that affordable workforce housing, like for Kate here, and again, I, I put this on because I think people get very scared of the unknown and I understand that, but we're talking about single-family housing. I also want to bring up a census data that just kind of struck me even as, oh my gosh, this is come to crisis mode. Forty-six percent of Lawrence households make under $50,000 a year. $50,000 does not allow you to buy a $338,000 house. This is the gap we're talking about for the workforce, the nurses, the teachers, the social workers, the, the small business owners, the administrative staff of Kansas University, the administrative staff, staff of the city and the county. These are the people that cannot afford to live in Lawrence and are struggling with high rents. And we want them to be able to work in Lawrence, live in Lawrence and build equity so that they can move on to buy Jane's house later on at a higher price. But that's not happening right now and these, and this is what we want, and again, when Jane wants to sell it is what I'm talking about, not from her. But again, saying that there's not people to buy that, that work here in Lawrence. What we're seeing is a lot of people from California coming in. We're not housing our workforce. We're housing other people that can afford Lawrence. And so I really feel like we really need to continue to have a conversation about this and the city has been bold in saying, this is our number one priority. So letting some fears of the unknown, when tenants to homeowners for 30 years has shown that we do nice, single-family developments. Here's a great example. Here's another. This is the most energy-efficient house in Lawrence ever built. It's a HERS score of 26. The average is 85 is energy-efficient. It's 26. It's like golf, the lower your score, the better your house. And it has a solar panel and the utilities are under $500 per year and this allows a senior to spend the same amount of money they would for a two-bedroom apartment and still build equity and still build the nest egg and still be able to take care of themselves in, throughout a longer retirement. These houses are also across the street from $350,000 houses that sold with no problem. So I have heard from several neighbors of fear that property values will decrease. Thirty years of studies have shown that rarely, if ever, unless it's a giant concentration and giant means hundreds of units, particularly in Lawrence, that the 50, 60, or even 80 units of single-family, brand-new construction will not lower property values. We haven't seen that ever happen with any of our properties and we haven't seen property values lowered anywhere in Lawrence in the last known five, 10 years. So this fear, I hate for the neighborhoods to have this because it just isn't happening and also supported by 30 years of research, that it doesn't happen when there are nice, new construction developments. So these are the families we want to serve. We want to protect our school districts and not have local neighborhood schools shut down. We want to say yimby, yes, in my neighborhood. We, the studies actually say that a lot of times affordable, moderate workforce housing helps higher-income neighborhoods actually increase in value because you now have people that want to move up into that and have the economic capacity to do that. So again, the mixed neighborhood is the best balance for everyone. This neighborhood also is not all homeowner. There's rental all around it. And so we're offering homeownership that in the land trust can demand that no one can move out and rent it out. We actually can guarantee owner occupancy forever in the permanent trust, which most neighborhoods can't ever get. So I really hope that the neighborhood will know that we are sincere about continuing to talk, getting your input. I just don't have a plan.
Rebecca, Rebecca, speak to the Commission, okay?
I don't have a plan yet to show the neighborhood because I need site control before I can start spending money to say, here's what we're looking at building and then we can get that input through the development process that hasn't started yet.
Thank you. Any questions for Rebecca or staff? I do have a, I do have a question for Randy. There were some points brought up by Jane regarding the contract. Are there any concerns, any of her concerns that need to be addressed?
This is Randy Larkin. No, the provisions regarding the housing, if they don't comply with the agreement, then we can claw the money back so it can be paid back to us. So if they don't provide affordable housing like they've agreed to in the future, then we can claw that back. Typically, once they purchase the property, you know, once we have an outlay of funds, this is our typical, you know, when we give a grant, this is our typical agreement, we do want to report. So we do want to report that it's been purchased and that they're going forward with the contract. And if they don't agree with the contract, then we can retrieve the money from, from tenants to homeowners. We haven't had that issue yet, but we're all fine with the agreement. The portion regarding the budget, part of this can be paid this year, part of this can be paid next year. If there's no money in the budget for next year for that purchase, then I think the agreement will go away, so.
Okay. As far as the process that we're following now, is allocating the 350 now and then waiting, is that, are we, with the process that we're following tonight, is that appropriate?
Yeah, I, I believe so, yes. Now, if you don't fund it in the future for next year, then this agreement will, will go away. It won't happen because we haven't funded it, but that leaves it open for that particular ability to go ahead and purchase it and then we'll fund, finish funding it next year.
Okay. Any other questions? I did have one, one more. The neighborhood, I mean, as Jane brought out, that within the staff report indicates in there that neighborhood discussions would happen during the final phases of the planning, planning, site planning process. Is there anything that we can stipulate with the contractor? Do we need to, or if there's any interest, that the neighborhood has to be engaged at certain levels of the process at, as they're beginning the, the zoning part as well as the site plan?
This is Randy Larkin. Once it gets rezoning, then notice has to be given to, to homeowners within, I think it's 400 feet or something of that nature, is that. That process needs to be followed and would be if there's rezoning, if there's site plans. You know, you, we don't have anything set in place to set up meetings with homeowners associations or neighbor associ, neighborhood associations, but, you know, we can always talk to the developer and you can give us direction and we can, we can work with them in doing that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Well, maybe I do. So I did want to clarify the, a point that Ms. Aldra's brought up is that some of the people aren't in organized neighborhoods. Would the public engagement as far as tenants to homeowners and staff is concerned, how far would that extend on this project?
I can't remember exactly. I know we extended the boundaries that have to be given legally. I think it's 400 feet now. I think it used to be 250 feet. So that's, that's, that's where we would go legally, you know, whether someone's living just outside.
Yeah, Jeff.
He's our expert on this, yes.
Planning Director Jeff.
Good evening. Jeff Craig, Planning Development Services. For the processes in development code, it is 400 feet to all property owners within the area of the property and also any neighborhood association that is registered within the 400 feet.
Okay. Great, thank you.
And Jeff, while you're here, it's a GPI.
And Jeff, while you're here, it's a GPI district. Could they build anything without rezoning in a GPI district?
Off the top of my head, not anything residential. It's really GPI is reserved for schools and public facilities. So anything that would be residential would have to go through the rezoning process, and very likely also through a plating process.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. No other questions, and I'm going to open it up to public comment. Any public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Larson and members of the commission. My name's Ron Gaisius. I spent five years serving on the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Board, including two years as its chair. And let me say, right at the onset, please don't impose any process requirements on our not-for-profit developers that you don't have on for-profit developers. This discussion the last few minutes about adding something in, a new requirement for additional hearings at a different time, I strongly object to that. And I hope you leave the rules in place, just as if there was a transfer of property from the school district to a private developer, and not ask our for, our not-for-profit developers to do anything extra. That's my first comment. Secondly, this is a great use of your capital investment dollars, and I strongly support this. The fact that we're rearranging a little bit from year to year, when these dollars are being utilized, is completely immaterial to me. Does it create a technical budget issue? You just change the budget every year as you move forward through this thing. I don't see a problem with this process. What I hear are concerns being raised about neighbors as an affordable housing project comes into their community, into their neighborhood. And it's a new neighborhood for an affordable housing project like this. You've been asking the Affordable Housing Advisory Board and the not-for-profit agencies to find ways to distribute the affordable housing projects into those parts of the community that don't have affordable housing projects heretofore. When we do that, new pockets of neighborhoods that you've not heard from in the past are going to come in and raise objections. They're going to talk about the loss of green space, they're going to talk about movement of water. Every project we have, every affordable housing project we have within the city is deserving somebody's green space and is moving water in ways that we haven't moved it before. Don't let those issues become barriers to success. This project is particularly important, I think, because of its scale. Relying upon affordable housing infill projects, one home at a time, or relying on auxiliary dwelling units to suddenly catch fire and become a solution, just not going to get the job done. We need projects of size, and this land acquisition allows us to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't know if I need to-- Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Monte Sokup. I am currently serving on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. I'm not speaking for that group tonight, speaking for myself as a advocate for affordable housing in this community. So thank you for the opportunity. I urge the commission to push this forward on the regular schedule and with the regular process that every development project in this city goes through. That is the process we've defined, and we, like Ron said, we should not put barriers in front of affordable housing projects because of concerns. There are processes to go through to hear those concerns, so let's just follow that Special note, that almost five years ago, this community voted in an open election to support affordable housing through the trust fund. This is an extension of that effort and this community's desire to have affordable housing in this community. We have projects like the Panasonic project, and other things that are going to bring workforce people to this community, and we need to take advantage of that and have, have places for our own people to work. Like Rebecca said, these are nurses, these are teachers, my wife's a teacher. I don't mind living next to my wife. It's a great, great person to live with. So these are the people that we're talking about in this, in this realm, that will purchase this affordable housing for this fore-purchased site. These are not people to be afraid of. These are our neighbors. This transaction, the land transaction, was a public bid process. I myself was registered on that bid process to look at that and follow it as a private citizen. I didn't place a bid. But it was an open process that the school district ran, per the state statutes for the school district to dispose of property. Let this project go through the normal planning and planning process. Finally, I just urge you to push this project forward. Everybody on this commission that I have talked to personally is interested in affordable housing. I read the paper last week. Every candidate mentioned affordable housing in their, in their policy or their, their statements about what, what their candidacy is about. This is an important issue for our community, and I support us not to put roadblocks in front of it. So I urge you, at the bottom of my heart, to push this project forward. It's a great project. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Commissioners, Mayor Larson, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Sarah Talia Faro, and I'm a Lawrence resident who has worked on affordable housing policy issues in the city for a number of years. I'm here to speak tonight in strong support for the use of capital improvement funds designated to affordable housing to be used to purchase, in the purchase of this parcel of land, to allow development of an affordable housing project managed by the Lawrence Community Housing Trust. Affordable housing trust funds are necessary because, simply put, the for-profit housing market cannot provide the new-build housing to households earning 80% of the area median income. I would even argue 100%, up to 100%. For-profit actors in the housing market have funding and resources at a scale that allows them to outcompete a growing proportion of households for available housing stock and for available land for builds. So I, I think we need to tip the scales toward those who are being disadvantaged now, including not-for-profit developers. The remedies we currently have for projects available to people earning under 80% of the area median income are subsidized land acquisition, housing development, and management by not-for-profit housing organizations. That said, I also know that before ground is broken to build affordable housing at the scale of this project, stakeholders need to build community first. Conventional and technical methods of notification and process for such a project are not enough, given by that you're already getting comments, even before you've entered into the planning process. This project requires immediate and facilitated community engagement that allows neighbors and the surrounding community to have real agency during the entire process, even at this stage. Often, people oppose such projects because they believe they will have no control or leverage in a project that, that has impacts on them. I think the city can play a novel and proactive role in that. I would like to add that I am not suggesting, I concur with Monte Sokup and Ron Gaisius, I am not suggesting that you put formal, some formal process in place. There are ways to have an informal, but real, community engagement process outside of the, the technical process. Projects that work in collaboration with neighborhood stakeholders have a much greater success rate, and that success rate can be sustainable. All neighbors, both those current and potential neighbors that such a project will bring, need to form shared agreements on what every neighbor should expect and deserve from each other, and some agency to assure that those desires are realized. But yes, in my backyard. This requires an ongoing--
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
Hello again, I'm Dustin Stumbling Bear, and as was referenced earlier, I pretty much made my stance on affordable housing pretty well-known. I'm going to approach this from a different perspective. When I was in my early twenties, I used to work at a factory up in Grand Forks, North Dakota, did American Woods Incorporated, and I built furniture, lawn furniture. I lived a 45-minute drive from where I worked in Minnesota. I lived in Minnesota, got up at 4:15 a.m. in the morning, got myself ready, packed my lunch, packed my snack, jumped in my car by 5:00 to drive my 45 minutes to work, because I needed a few minutes to walk across. We'd get our assignments before we'd check in at 6:00 a.m. Work till 3:00, 3:30, turn around and drive all the way back, shower up, have the rest of my night. My night would begin around 5:00 p.m. I was willing to drive all that distance, because it was a good-paying job, but my affordable housing was 45 minutes away in another state. Let's think about that as we consider these kinds of projects for affordable housing, as we're talking about preparing for the Panasonic plant moving in, and wanting to plus up our local stock of housing in anticipation for those workers. And I'm gonna give a little secret. The people building that plant right now will gladly live in this community if they can afford to live here. I have a couple friends from the military who do oil rig work. So they were in North Dakota during that big boom, drove 50 miles from where they worked, because they got the cheapest place, which at that time was wildly expensive, because of all the influx of new housing, all the prices skyrocketed. They were looking at $1,000 a rent for a two-bedroom place at one point in Bismarck, North Dakota. That was ridiculous. Average was about 500 before that boom. We can't afford that kind of skyrocketing prices now. We will definitely not be able to afford them coming forward, going forward in time, five years, 10 years down the road, when that plant is supposed to be in full swing. These projects now will take time, will take years, but they will help our community be ready. And so I ask that you continue this process. And one other thing I'm going to try and throw in real quick. I recently got a letter from the VA, going through a valuation process with them. It's been two months since it started. That letter simply said, "We don't have a decision yet, we haven't forgotten you." As a veteran, that felt awesome, that my government and the agency supposed to be fighting for me didn't forget me. We can do that with the city government. I know it's a lot of letters, I know it's a lot of postage to pay for, but gosh darn, doesn't it feel good to say, "I didn't get forgotten." And I'm not asking us to change all the processes, but be willing to reach out to our neighbors.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Hi, I'm Chris Flowers, and I, before I forget, I would just like to ask, you brought up the 400-foot requirement for the notice. I was just wondering, is that going to be the requirement for any potential protest petition also, or is it still the 200-whatever? I just ask because, when it comes to the protest petition, renters are excluded. So if the city controls how far the, a protest petition area is, I think we should go for the smallest, because the way it's set up isn't fair to renters when they're excluded from them. And when it comes to projects like this, renters are the ones that are going to want these affordable housing made, so they can move into it. And so to exclude them from a protest petition, it just seems kind of crappy. Also, when it comes to nonprofits, we shouldn't be putting more requirements, we should put, be putting less requirements on them. I brought this up when that dare, when they reapplied for their special-use permit. We shouldn't be treating nonprofits like they're a business, just looking to, to make a quick buck, because they're, they're trying to solve a problem for the community. So why should we, like, hold them to higher standards? Like, if, if they're trying to solve a problem for us, we should be easing up the requirements for them. And also, when it comes to property values going down, like, if someone says that to you, you should be like, but I thought, well, because everyone's bitching about property, like, the property taxes going up, so if someone says that their property values might go down, just be like, but I thought you wanted your property taxes to go down, you know? Like, well, property values going down is good for renters. Like, if, if, like, the reason my rent went up is, well, property taxes are going up, so if property values went down, it'd be good for renters. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general or public comment on this?
Nancy Snow. I know this will come as a shock to some of you, but there are city employees for whom I have nothing but pure, unmitigated admiration and respect. Yes, that's true. And one of them is in this room, and that is Leah Roslin. And Leah is an expert on housing. I have benefited from her wisdom, and I would urge you to take what she says seriously. If she is interested in running your affordable housing program, and I hope she is, I hope you take her candidacy seriously, because she will help this city move forward. And if you could consider linking the problem of homelessness to the problem of affordable housing, I think we would have a win-win situation. You could indeed then start a continuum for trying to get people who are unhoused, who are qualified, out of that situation. It's a difficult path, to be sure--
Excuse me, Nancy, do you have a comment about this project specifically?
Yeah, I will, okay? I will. And the, the idea here is that, and I'll, I'll spell it out for you. Affordable housing is great for the people who have already been mentioned, right? The people who will come for the Panasonic factory, the nurses, the teachers, those who could not afford the $350,000 homes. But it is also, as I said, a pathway for those who are unhoused to housing. I will now stop, Madam Mayor, before you get excited about my comments. Okay?
Well, I'm just that guy that'll say it. Mayor, you've been letting people run on for five and seven minutes, no offense to anybody that got to do that, but you got to interrupt her? God! This is our time, and I'm going to use it. Now, I want to second what Nancy said. Affordable housing is key to ending homelessness. And as she said, Leah Roslin is the person, if you're going to put somebody in there that's an expert that's going to take care of it, I mean, you chased off your last expert, that's straight true, and everybody knows it. You need an expert. And I can tell you that the people that you have in the affordable housing realm, or in the housing, housing initiatives divisions, are not your experts. You talk about putting more, more burdens on nonprofits, that's nuts. You eliminate burdens for your high-dollar friends all the time. Let's start evening the scales a little bit. And you talk about the budget. You could get $85,000 back for that budget right now by, by denying your first-agenda item. Because we need that man and his friends up at the Oriad, you know, the felons, and the people that have raked in millions of dollars out of this town, to start building affordable housing, and not leaving it to the city to try to figure it out with a nonprofit, to try to, I mean, why can't we have a real business come in here and start a business building affordable housing? They're not going to lose money, they're going to buy the land, they're going to build it, they're going to sell it. They don't have to make as much, but they're making plenty on, on the west side of town. Put some reasonable people in charge, and let's start leveraging the power that we have as a city. Because you can't keep leaving people out on the streets, and you can't keep expecting people to pay $1,500 a month mortgages, when they're barely making 40, 50, $60,000 a year, and that's a high number. And all those people that you're taking advantage of in this way, those are all your service workers. You go to your Dunkin' Donuts and get your latte, that person's making probably 15 an hour. You go to Hy-Vee and you buy your groceries, that person's making about 15 to 18 an hour. You tell me how they're supposed to afford a $300,000 house. Those are the people you are, you have enslaved in this town. By God, give them a damned house to live in.
Any other public comment on this item? You've already had your chance, Jane, sorry. Anybody on Zoom, if no further public comment here?
Paula Slater, did you have a comment on this item?
Yes, I'm not really sure how to--
Yes, I'm not really sure how to... I use Zoom a lot, I'm not sure how to put myself on here. Okay, I'll just give my comments. Yes, I am Paula Slater, and this has really been a lot of good topic. My concern is low-income housing. Again, the whole broad spectrum of homeless and low-income people getting places they can afford. And I really have appreciated, it's kind of blossomed through all this. And with how this started, right now was when, and I don't know the names, when the woman brought up that the neighbors want to know about it. And then it comes out, "Well, we can't tell them yet because this and that hasn't gotten figured out." What then the Tenants to Homeowners people, those two women presented, was very good. It was a very simple, especially with the little presentation of some pictures. That was enough to help me comprehend what is being considered. So that if it's me and my neighbor just looking at this property and like, "What is going on over there?" I've had things like that across the street from me, that we don't know what this building is going up. Nobody knows. It just saves it from all the chitter-chat and concern. And I do think it goes a broad spectrum of the people knowing, back with that pallet housing stuff, people didn't know. We don't have to wait for it to get really worked out better. Let it get at the ground level and visit with the people, get them involved so they do back it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
No, Mayor.
Is that it? Okay, bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
I guess I'd say a couple things. I mean, I certainly support the project. And I would note that we adopted a CIP last year that puts $350,000 towards this project this year. And we're allocating that $350,000. And if we're gonna give them the $350,000, which we approved in a public process, then you need an agreement with that. And that's what this agreement is. It does have a second line that says that we will give them 850 on January 1st, which is what's in our proposed CIP. But Section 3B, as Randy pointed out, says, "The city retains the right to unilaterally adjust the amount of the disbursement if the governing body determines that the insufficient funds exist to fully fund the grantee at the level set forth in this agreement." Again, that allows us, if we do not pass the CIP, then it won't get funded. And so it will be part of a process. And if the public wants to come and suggest that we not fund that in the CIP, we have that hearing coming up later, we have two or three more on those. But in the meantime, we want to distribute the $350,000, so we need this agreement. And I feel good about that process. I'd also, I did want to make, you know, show, which I understood, there's a question about the original presentation of site plans, and maybe there's a question that there wouldn't be a rezoning. But it is a GPI district. A GPI district cannot have residential units, and therefore it's gonna have to be rezoned, which will be a process, followed by a site plan process. So we have plenty of process in place. So I'm gonna support this agenda item and look forward to a robust process, and I trust that Tenants to Homeowners will work with the neighbors even more so than required by the processes we have, because that's what I've seen them do in the past.
Yep, I'm gonna go ahead and support this as well, given, you know, what folks have said. In our neighborhood, we've had tenants in there, they've been nothing but good actors and participated fully in the process and forthcoming with their plans. Also, the fact that it's distributed, affordable housing, getting it more across the city is appealing to me as well, as well as the nature of it, getting potential, you know, folks in homes. And yeah, I know that, you know, given what was said by tenants, that they need to acquire the site to go ahead and start that engagement process, so I'm confident that they'll go ahead and, you know, practice what they preach.
Yeah, I appreciate the concern that there's a change in the way we're allocating that, but we do do that all the time. We did it earlier on consent. We need that flexibility to move forward with all kinds of projects. And I appreciate that that might feel somewhat surprising, but the neighborhood did notice it, which is good, and we had this great conversation about it. I'm comfortable with changing it to the two years for a lot of reasons, and including, if I understand correctly, the Kansas Legislature has made some changes that might make it difficult for the school district to sell anything in the future. So I would like to move forward with this while we have the opportunity. I will say, what I'm agreeing to is the purchase of land here, that doesn't mean I agree to the final site plan, it doesn't mean that I agree to the zoning. As Commissioner Finkelstein indicates, those are long processes that are coming after this, and we will all be watching them very, very closely, and we will all be waiting to make sure that the neighborhood is consistently engaged with and heard.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna support this project, I think it's a great one for affordable housing. Tenants to Homeowners has been just a very good partner with the city and other developers throughout our community. The answers I received from staff on my questions, as well as from Tenants to Homeowner, addressed any issues that I felt needed to be at least discussed. And there's gonna be a good, robust conversation on the public side that will happen, based on, you know, Jeff Crick coming up and talking about it. So I'm satisfied with it. I think it's, again, a good project going forward, and I look forward to the engagement, so.
So if you're ready, Mayor, I'd move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Tenants to Homeowners for the use of affordable housing capital improvement project funds to facilitate the acquisition of land to be placed in the community land trust for the future development of permanent affordable housing.
Second?
I have first and a second all in favor. Aye opposed, it passes four to zero. So we're gonna move on to the work session, we have...
Regular agenda item number one?
Yes. Work session, regular agenda item one. And we're pulling up regular agenda item number one into the work session before the work session because that project, the applicant has asked for a deferral on that. And so we will move... Sam, come on up, Sam.
Yeah, Sam, economic development analyst. The agenda item tonight is for an IRB, an industrial revenue bond and Neighborhood Revitalization Act incentive request. The applicant has asked to open and defer the public hearing until later date.
Okay. Open and continue.
Continue.
Continue, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, continue, yeah. Okay. Is there a date? We're looking at August 1st. Is that satisfactory with the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Do that. So at this point, I would just entertain him... Do I need to open it, Sherry?
You can, yes, that'd be great.
Open it and say, "Continue."
Open it and then continue it to August 1st, yes.
Yes. Okay. So I want to open the public hearing and continue it to August 1st.
Yeah, but I'll take a vote.
Yeah, right. So do we need a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, second. And first and a second, all in favor? Aye opposed, it passes four to zero. We'll see you August 1st.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're in the work session. Item number one, receive the strategic plan update from strong, welcoming neighborhood outcome team.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Please bear with me while I struggle with multiple screams. Okay. Wonderful. Okay, what choice for that? Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Leah Roslin, the Affordable Housing Administrator and the co-convenor of the Affordable Housing Work Group for our Housing and Homelessness Community Plan. I am joined by some of my colleagues in this work, available here and online. And I'm happy to provide an update on our progress on the plan. Right off the bat, for the first update, the plan has been officially named, so the plan will be called "A Place for Everyone: A Community Plan to End Homelessness." And that really speaks to the underlying goals and values that are embedded in this work, namely, that we are a community of belonging for all who live here, and that all community members are deserving of housing as the ultimate solution to ending homelessness. As a reminder, this plan sets key strategies for moving the needle on city strategic plan indicators SWN5 and SWN6. The goal of SWN5 is to decrease the percentage of households experiencing housing stress, which is defined as spending more than 30% of household income on housing, including utilities, insurance, and taxes. Currently, 48% of Lawrence renters and 17% of Lawrence homeowners experience housing stress and are considered housing insecure. What this means is that an increase in rent or property taxes could tip the scale for these households from housed to homeless. The goal of SWN6 is to decrease the point in time count for people experiencing homelessness to functional zero, meaning that when homelessness does occur, it is rare and brief. The last point in time count counted 333 people experiencing homelessness in our community. Again, just a reminder about the stakeholder group working on this plan. Our partners are listed here, and I have so much gratitude to all these incredible partners in the work. The objective of our plan is to create a system that achieves functional zero through policy, system, and environmental changes, resulting in all Douglas County residents having access to safe and fundamental right, access to the fundamental right of safe, accessible, attainable, and affordable housing in which homelessness is a rare and brief occurrence. The plan focus areas include strategies related to equity and inclusion, affordable housing, supportive housing, emergency shelter, and systems. When I first presented the draft plan, I reviewed the goals and strategies of that plan, so I'll not be going over those again this evening. Rather, I'll be sharing our community engagement efforts since the last presentation, some themes that we heard from our community, and where we would like to go from here. In the last couple months, I'm looking at Gabby's beautiful picture, in the last couple months, we had six community listening sessions that included over 200 participants. Two were held virtually, two were in person for the whole community, and two were held in person for those with lived experience of houselessness. The city also provided the draft plan outline with a form to provide written feedback online. At the sessions, we provided an overview of the plan goals and priorities, and then we engaged our community members in roundtable discussions to get their concerns, ideas, and recommendations for the plan. I want to be sure to acknowledge the incredible work of the city and county community engagement staff, Carrie, Maureen, Hannah, and Taylor, for their incredible support and leadership in this area. We could not have pulled this off without them. And in the next few slides, I'll be sharing the major themes we heard from our community. So number one, a reoccurring theme was the importance of centering and compensating those with lived experience in the strategic planning and program design partners as equal partners in this work with relevant and vital expertise. The city and county are both considering policies for the equitable inclusion of folks with lived experience, and the Equity and Inclusion Work Group for this plan includes strategies for meaningful, dignified, and equitable inclusion. This will require that we re-envision how we have traditionally engaged residents for boards, commissions, and other community engagement opportunities, and provide the supports necessary so that participation is possible. Second, we heard loud and clear that we need to prioritize meeting the basic health, dignity, safety, and well-being needs of the unhoused community members, including providing healthy food, toilets, showering, hygiene facilities, and storage. Members of our unhoused community spoke about the lack of healthy food and how difficult it is to transition into housing when there's a lack of basic services provided that would enable them to obtain and maintain employment for housing. For example, think about the challenge of going to a job interview when you are houseless. You may not have clean clothes or a way to do laundry, you may not have access to shower facilities, and you don't have anywhere to safely leave all of your precious worldly belongings. We heard stories of unhoused community members digging holes and burying their belongings when they needed to leave their site, because that was the only way that they could keep them relatively protected. And you may not have eaten that day, or perhaps for multiple days. That's not to mention not having a reliable phone to communicate with a prospective employer. In addition, you're trying to figure out how to manage all these difficult logistics while under intense scrutiny, facing ongoing hostility and prejudicial ideas, and experiencing acute, ongoing trauma that literally takes our higher cognitive functioning offline as the brain is in fight-or-flight survival mode. My daughter actually said to me yesterday, "Mama, why don't we have people try and be homeless for a day and see how easy it is?" And I think that's a great idea. It's very difficult. Perhaps the most heartbreaking stories that were shared were by female-identified community members experiencing houselessness who were physically unsafe on the streets and in the camps. Sexual harassment and sexual assault were commonly shared experiences, including examples of trading sex within the community, for safety within the community. Nationally, 32% of women and 38% of trans people experiencing houselessness have experienced sexual assault in the last year, and this is compounding trauma. As the leading cause for homelessness among female-identified community members is sexual assault and domestic violence. If you consider Maslow's hierarchy of needs, it is clear that the basic health and safety needs of our unhoused community members must be prioritized. Now I have to flip around my laptop. Third, to reach our goals, organizational capacity issues must be addressed if we are to provide sufficient services with housing with the necessary supports so that folks can stay successfully housed. The city, county, and our nonprofit partners are struggling with the resources to meet the needs. We have incredible partners in this work, truly, doing everything they can to meet the need, but the reality is that more resources are needed in the form of staff, volunteers, and funding for service provision. You will never meet harder workers than those serving our community in nonprofits and in homeless services, but they are getting burnt out, experiencing ongoing vicarious trauma with little supports for themselves, and being asked to take on more work while the reality is many of them themselves are experiencing housing insecurity. Organizational capacity represents community capacity to end chronic homelessness, and this arose as a critical theme. Fourth, we need more ongoing proactive community engagement and education to increase community buy-in and willingness to implement the plan and invest in solutions. Ideally, we are having ongoing conversations with our neighbors, not just when a new affordable housing development is proposed, but it's just a regular part of our business to engage with our neighbors and our community members, so that we have, so that we are able to generate a shared understanding of the issues, balance competing values, and generate solutions that create strong, welcoming neighborhoods for every single one of us that live here. Continuing with the themes, fifth is that there's a significant need for more housing, for more accessible, attainable, affordable, quality housing, where specific populations who have experienced disparities and marginalization can be housed inclusively and safely. This includes the populations on this slide, which have had little to no targeted housing interventions in our community. Six, a common theme was the power imbalance between well-resourced homeowners and business owners compared to low-income community members who generally lack power and representation. A challenge in meeting solutions to homelessness, namely, supportive, affordable housing, are often harshly opposed. includes the populations on this slide, which have had little to no targeted housing interventions in our community. Six, a common theme was the power imbalance between well-resourced homeowners and business owners compared to low-income community members who generally lack power and representation. A challenge in meeting solutions to homelessness, namely supportive, affordable housing, are often harshly opposed by neighbors who may say that they support these resources in theory, as long as it's not in my backyard. The folks who live here, the folks whose lives are in the balance, are often not able to take advantage of the opportunity to publicly support initiatives as they are busy trying to survive, find a meal, and a place to stay out of the heat or the cold for the night, and are critical missing voices in this discussion, and therefore their perspectives may not be considered in the decisions of policymakers. This power imbalance and who has access to social capital and opportunities to provide public comment and feedback has resulted in vital new developments being delayed in the past, sometimes for years. I cannot state enough how detrimental this is in our ability to achieve the goals outlined in the plan. And then finally, we heard that more details are needed to inform the plan, specifically cost, accountability, funding and resources, and the prioritization of strategies when there is not the capacity to do them all. We're moving forward with finalizing these details while at the same time implementing strategies that are possible to pursue with our current staffing, resource, and partnership levels. Those strategies include addressing the immediate health and safety needs of our unhoused community members, leveraging trust funds for new affordable housing development, planning new supportive and affordable housing development, and engaging members with lived experience to work with us as we move forward. I'd like to note that the themes I presented are not inclusive of all the comments received in the listening sessions. The key themes I just reviewed were identified by tallying how often that particular subject was raised in each session, and how consistently the issue was raised across every session. So in other words, if a subject was brought up by the majority of the roundtables at every discussion, it is counted as a key theme. So while not rising to the level of a key theme as presented here, there are other common themes that were brought up in the listening sessions and in written comment. Those themes included mental and behavioral health service needs, recommendations for green and sustainable building requirements for new affordable housing developments, the need for employment services, the need for a one-stop-shop social service hub, the intersection of sexual and domestic violence, the need for more accessible, affordable housing, stereotypes and stigma against people experiencing houselessness, and transportation So our takeaways. Things are bad, perhaps worse than we even thought. Very basic services that are fundamental in assisting community members move from homelessness to housing are not being delivered, and the level of urgent health and safety service needs are also not being consistently and collaboratively provided. Service providers are at their limits. They are being asked to do more with already full work and caseloads, and many are experiencing the impact of vicarious trauma, as I mentioned earlier. Again, the capacity of our partners in this work represent our community capacity to achieve our goals, and our providers and honestly, city and county staff in this work are worn thin, as one of my colleagues said today, holding on by one small, very frayed string. Compassionate solutions are needed for our social service workforce.
Sorry about that.
Oh, good. We need more money, resources, and help. People, power, and funding are perhaps the two biggest resources needed, including new social service providers to serve areas where there are current gaps, but additional resources in capital, technology, community support, and professional development opportunities are also needed. This is risky. Providers and all of us doing this work are under intense scrutiny with no shortage of criticism, no matter what decision is made. This is an issue where no matter what decision is made, there will be disappointed and angry stakeholders who are not shy about what they think could be done better, and sometimes it's personal and heartbreaking to hear. The dialogue thus far has not been one of compassion and looking towards compassionate, shared solutions, and some of our partners are honestly scared to take on the risk for their organizations. But we're not giving up. We are leveraging all of our internal and external resources to meet this need so that all who live here have a home and a place of belonging in our I will now transition to discussing what this may cost us, but first, this is a look at current year's spending on homelessness and housing within the city. So firstly, this does not include salaries, benefits, operations, or the cost of downstream emergency services that the city pays for, such as fire, medical, and police, which are significant and would be worthy of analysis. The total funds we were able to put towards housing and homelessness this year were greatly enhanced by one-time COVID response and recovery funds that we will not see in our community again. Notice that more than $12 million was covered through ARB and CARES funds, the bottom table, while only $4 million was provided through reoccurring city funding sources. Lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't point out how our funds are being directed for homelessness, housing stabilization, and affordable housing. We know that keeping someone housed is much cheaper than providing services and trying to get them rehoused once they've fallen into homelessness, and yet this area is the lowest funded through the city. In addition, we know that affordable housing is the ultimate solution to homelessness, so we don't have to continue to expend large sums of money on emergency homeless services and programs, and yet the vast majority of funds are being directed to homeless programs. A critical question I would like for you to consider, therefore, is if there is the will to invest in long-term solutions that will end chronic homelessness, rather than providing downstream solutions that provide short-term assistance and rarely results in moving people from homelessness to housed. After all, how can we house the unhoused when there's not housing for them to move into? This slide shows the five-year total city investments in housing and homelessness, and I have the same reflections as in the previous slide. However, I'd like to point out that the amount we expended in five years is the equivalent to what we expended in one year with COVID funds, and even still are struggling with capacity. So this is the initial cost estimate for the five-year plan with a couple of key disclaimers that I'd like to make. So first, other than the supportive housing area, these are really just initial estimates based on current benchmarks and our best guess. These are low estimates. So for example, the affordable housing estimate only covers what investments may be for new developments and rehabs, but does not include funding for other strategies such as right-to-counsel, community engagement, marketing and communications, and vitally needed studies. Emergency shelter only includes a bare-bones estimate for Palat Village, the camp, and basic emergency services. We are most confident in the supportive housing numbers because those were analyzed and provided in the supportive housing assessment that was done last year. One of the priorities of the group right now is getting a better handle of the cost, and we will need some additional time to get better numbers that we can stand behind with more confidence. This is really just to give you a ballpark estimate of what we might be looking at. And finally, where we are moving from here. So we are prioritizing in community engagement, education, and listening sessions as a key value and priority, engaging every community member to come along with us as partners in the solutions. We will be documenting the immediate, short, so about one year, and long-term cost estimates for the plan. We are continuing to develop the plan with the goal of being back before you this winter in the hopes of presenting a final version to seek approval. And in the meantime, and into the future, we need strong and brave leadership in supporting solutions to homelessness that does and will have community opposition. We thank you for your brave leadership and for your support of this critical work.
Thank you.
Stand for questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Leah?
No, she answered one of mine that I had in terms of short-term and long-term strategies that looks like they're working on. Just kind of, I was curious about that, so thank you.
So I did have a question. Is the plan to, you said to finish it up in December, does that mean it will be implemented in 2024? Is that the goal?
Yes, and we're already implementing. So I don't want to give the impression that we're waiting on anything. Whatever we can do, again, with the resources, capacity, staffing levels that we have, in meeting those immediate health and safety needs, we are moving forward. Community engagement, which is embedded in the plan, we are moving forward. Equity inclusion. But yes, in terms of really having a good sense of the final strategies and moving forward into those more upstream, newer strategies that maybe we haven't tried before, that will start in earnest in the new year.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Anything else for Leah?
Oh, I was curious about one more thing. In terms of that planning as well, is there any forecasting for any sort of grant opportunities included in that or anything?
Actually, one of our strategies, several of our strategies, is to look for additional grant opportunities in the Affordable Housing Work Group. That's one of the strategies that we're actually already moving forward with, forming a grant work group so that we can be watching out for new grants and leveraging our capacity as partners to apply for those opportunities to bring in new sources of funding into our community. Absolutely, that's going to be vital.
Thank you for the presentation, and I know the answer to this, but I wanted to make sure it's clear. You presented a couple slides on the amount of money the city spends, but then the final slide is how much the entire plan is, which includes the city and the county and other funders as well, correct?
Correct. That is correct, yeah.
Any other questions? Not, we'll open up to public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you, Leah. It was a good presentation.
Nancy Snow, I'm sure you are expecting me to comment on this. I want to thank Leah for the really important work that her group has done. It's very thorough, very complete. I'm really impressed by it. I do want to say that in my experience with the unhoused, which started in November of this past year, when I went out to the North Lawrence camp and had my heart broken by what I saw there. And I've been going out regularly ever since. In my experience, I've identified two large groups of the unhoused population. One is individuals who suffer from addiction, mental health issues, and sometimes physical issues such as autism. There is very little that can be done, in my experience, to help those people, given the resources available. Given what Leah told you about the burnout among workers, I've had conversations with folks at Burt Nash, who are pretty much at the end of their rope but still going. Those people, tragically, I don't know what can be done. But there is another group of people whose prospects are a little brighter, and those are individuals who have marketable skills. So I've met people out at the camp who work on bicycles, for example. So they work on bicycles, they repair bicycles, they paint bicycles, they have a good product, and getting them funding really is as simple as setting up a Facebook page. I've also met people who are very good artists, who could be tattoo artists who could sell their work. One of the issues confronting them that I've discovered is a lack of self-esteem and self-identifying as homeless. I was with one of these individuals in a McDonald's the other day, and he said, "I don't want to come in, I'm homeless." I said, "Nobody knows that," but they have internalized a stigma. And so part of the challenge of this community is to remove the stigma. One of the things that the advocates that I work with and I are considering is setting up a 501(c)(3) and working with members of the community to try to do community re-entry for these people by helping them with marketable skills and helping move them out of homelessness, helping them create the funding that they will need, and most importantly, I think, the self-esteem to consider themselves as contributing members of this community. Thank
I'm Michael Bastin, and in a way, I wasn't even going to talk, but then I got up and I saw that plan that they had, and it looked like they had a lot of good, you know, spent a lot of time in that plan. I used to be chronically homeless in town here. I was at the drop-in center. You know, when there was a wet shelter and a dry shelter, I was at the Lawrence Community Shelter. And I just struggled in and out of addiction, working, and, you know, and just couldn't get it, you know. I couldn't, you know, stay actively employed and everything. Four years ago, I went down to Arizona and went to a private sober living, and it was a pretty strict place. It was all self-sufficient. You paid a rent, $145 a week. You were required to go to a 12-step program. Most of the homeless people that I have encountered over the last 10 years have addiction problems, right? Or you want to call it addiction problems, it's actually thinking problems, right? We don't know how to problem-solve. When things don't go our way, it's either fight or flight, like we'll either fight or we'll leave. Giving shelter, jobs, and all that to homeless people doesn't really do them no good, man. It's our thinking. We, like, common, basic life skills is what I was taught down in Arizona, and it's difficult. It's just difficult, because when you're not used to getting up and going to work, or you're used to telling yourself lies all the time, it's always, you know, you're always, "Well, they did this, they did that." No, it's you, right? And I've got over 20 months clean and sober, and it's really just alcohol and drugs wasn't my problem. I did that just fine, right? My problem was making my decisions. And, I mean, if we are going to support a program and put millions of dollars into it, then we need to somehow, the problems from within, right? We have to know how to problem-solve. We teach our kids to go to school, budget, right? Get a job before we get a car.
Thank you, Michael.
All right.
Congratulations on your sobriety. Any other public comment on this?
Hi. My name is Shannon Ahori. I'm the Executive Director of the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority. I've been involved in this process. I want to say, the one thing that I will say from the strategies is that you can see this isn't a one solution or one problem, that it is a myriad of problems from people who need to have an opportunity to be first-time homebuyers to our houseless population. The Housing Authority intends and has been a key participant in this. When the Housing Authority started, you know, more than 50 years ago, HUD actually funded construction of affordable housing. They no longer fund construction of affordable housing. They provide vouchers, and I brought my annual plan. The Housing Authority has 186 households that came to us out of homelessness, and the vast majority of them, we use vouchers to assist. And the vast majority of them, we use vouchers to assist. The biggest program is from the City's Home Program. And what I will say is, when I started doing this work 13 years ago, which I hate to admit, you know, we weren't a top-line issue. We weren't mentioned in candidate forums. We, right, I mean, I came once a year. And since then, it has become a really serious issue. And one of the things that I just want to say is how much I appreciate both the city and the county becoming real players in this because it does take a lot of resource. It's going to take all of the people, Tenista homeowners, the Housing Authority, family promise, city and the county, to make a dent into this problem. And I just wanted to say thank you. I think you get criticized a lot, and I just want to say it showed a lot of leadership to really take on the homeless. And none of us do this perfectly. And I just want to say that I applaud the work that you've done and that from that entire spectrum, you really are a player from the trust fund all the way down to the efforts that you do in homelessness. And so I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Mayor, can I ask Shannon a question?
Sure.
Shannon, while you're here, we had a consent agenda item about allowing you to have some ownership of the land. Just talk a little bit about what that might mean going forward, the implication of that.
Yeah, so a lot of housing authorities across the country are a player in the low-income housing tax credit market. And we intend to develop our expertise so that we can also participate in that and any other types of development that becomes available. We closely watch. We were talking earlier about grants and different areas of funding. At the agency, we closely watch what HUD funds, all the NOFs that come out of HUD, also KHRC. And recently, they've issued their ARPA funding, right? And so there are funds out there that we intend to be ready to access. And the, with the earlier action will allow us to, similar to what Tenista homeowners did, which is, you know, construct real estate deals, basically. Every single thing that the Housing Authority brings online will be for low-income individuals. It will always stay for low-income individuals. All of our properties have an attached covenant that we can only house in those properties, low-income individuals. And so we intend to be not only someone who administers the programs through HUD, Section 8 primarily in public housing, but also to become a player in the development of additional affordable housing.
Thank you. Other public comment on this item? Not, we'll go to Zoom.
If you do want to provide public comment on this, if you could raise your virtual hand, that helps us know who wants to. By comments. I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Nope. Bring it back to the Commission. This was just a receive item, so we won't have a vote on it. And I, we're going to go into item number two, which is the City Manager's Recommended Budget, but we're going to take a 10-minute break before we do that. We will begin item number two of the work session, received the 2024 City Manager's Recommended Budget and the 2024 to 2028 Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you. I'm going to lead off, and then I'll be followed by a number of other folks that are attending here tonight to help present this budget. And I'd like to start off with some recognitions. First of all, I'd like to recognize the executive team who are, who will be presenting tonight. In the last few years, we haven't done that. We've moved through the very large agenda of the budget presentation as quickly as we could, presenting a lot of information, but it did lose the architects of these departmental budgets. And we'd like you to hear their voices. We think it's important that the community understands this is a massive team effort in putting this plan together. And we paid a special attention this year to really bringing our team together, some of whom are, this is their first budget with the city, and to bring forward a plan that we believe is a sustainable plan that moves us to the next step in the next year of our strategic planning and is also something that has realistic achievable goals and resources that are affixed to it. So I want to recognize their presence here tonight, and you'll be hearing from them soon. I also want to go back in time a little bit to the strategic plan. You know, it's easy for me to talk about the strategic plan because it has laid such an important context to the way we allocate resources here in Lawrence. We started budgeting around the strategic plan once we adopted that two years ago, and this is, this will enter the second year of our strategic plan funding. And the, as a reminder, because we've, we're now three years into the planning process, and that was even in the pandemic, that we built this plan based on a lot of community input. We had 3,000 people's participation, and we listened to, we heard a lot tonight about, on some of these items, about public engagement, how important it is to listen and to involve the public. That's what we did. 3,000 people through many, many hours in many different locations, being invited to where people gather and talk about their community. So we built this plan off of that listening. And I think even tonight, we heard the results of listening and changing our priorities. As we heard some of the people that are addressing homelessness and housing, and they said, "It is now a top priority. It didn't use to be." That came directly out of the listening we did to this community, and it has been a challenge to now build into the capacity of this single budget of an organization that does already impressive in a wide variety of services and provides a lot of facilities and services to its community with high demands and high expectations to also then begin to address something so complex and so critical as affordable housing and homelessness. So you'll see that here in this presentation, but I wanted to re-center us into the strategic plan as we started to make this presentation and really have this discussion with our annual budget process. So the recommended budget for 2024 includes a budget for a five-year capital improvement plan. So that gives us, the capital improvement plan gives us a chance to see big pieces, things that take a long time to do, things that are expensive and that are, have predictable lifespans, and how we invest in our capital infrastructure. So our agenda tonight, we'll talk about, I'll take you through the budget highlights of this plan. It's not just a financial model, it's an operating model. It's a, it's a model of how we're going to deliver services, the economic outlook that underpins how we believe the resources are coming into our community, the way we're proposing to pay for these vital services and facilities, and what we predict is the community continues to grow in our economic condition. We're going to cover a lot about the general fund. The general fund is where most of the discretionary activity happens. We have enterprise funds, which are the utilities, which are not insignificant, but they have their own funding source, and they're required to spend only the money that is collected through fees and services there. The general fund covers many different things, and it is, it is where a lot of our value discussions and conflicts come in. And so it's where we spend a lot of time building a plan, and I expect we will have a lot of time spent on the general fund discussion with the community and with you. There are other funds as well. with the community and with you. There are other funds as well that we will go through and make sure that we're transparent in talking about what those are, but they're usually much more simple than the general fund. And then, of course, the capital improvement plan, which the commission and the community had a pretty robust discussion on just a few months ago, which has continued to get some, get some attention, but it's important that you're adopting and funding the, the next year of this plan with this budget process. So some of the budget highlights, I'll go to the budget summary. This is, the total budget is $459 million. Our expenditures are expected to be $471 million. The mill levy is flat for the 2023 budget. As per your encouragement, a couple of months ago, we did, we are offering a flat mill levy. The general operating levy is at 21.142, the debt service at 7.956, the library proposes 4.109, for a total of 33.207. We show 854 Four major things that this budget plan accomplishes and delivers to the community. First of all, after three years, and quite a bit of federal assistance to level things out after the pandemic, we have closed the general fund structural deficit. And while there are some service impacts that we will highlight, we believe that those service impacts will be minimal and have minimal impact on most of the community. So we closed the general fund deficit and in that gap, which was not an easy thing to do, but we're very proud of this plan accomplishing that. We added significant investments in housing and homeless response. We heard a lot more detail about that from Leah Roslin and the plan that has been developed, and I won't go too deep into that, other than to pause here and say, this is really where all of us, especially those that were impacted and that get our resources from the general fund, had to look very carefully at what could we live without, what could we shave off, how could we find space and resources to elevate this important priority without raising taxes, which was our direction. So it took a lot of, a lot of sacrifice and creativity across all of the services to try to find capacity, and we deliver that here. We also continued the commitment to the rehabilitation of infrastructure, existing infrastructure that had been neglected over the years, that had not received the investment it needed, and that is keeping us from having the lowest cost of ownership, which is important to all of the community. We also are providing resources for growth, and that is a tough balance to keep investing in existing capital infrastructure needs that maybe we needed to do over time. We're catching up, and we're continuing now to try and support growth that is necessary for the livelihood and the future of the city. The other thing that's in here that is significant is that we are continuing to invest in our employees. And much like the infrastructure, some of the things that we've seen in the reinvestment in the wages and in the pay of our employees that do this work were somewhat behind, and we needed to make some big investments over the last two years to catch us up. Thank goodness we did, because now we see that inflation and some of the other pressures, if we were also making up that difference, it would be a big lift. So now it's important that we stay, stay in tune with the market, and that we continue to make investments to stay up to the market conditions, which we've committed to. Those four big things drive most of the main decisions that we had in this budget, and I wanted to highlight those This is just talking about how big the structural deficit was, and if you get a sense of how big those dollars are, as you start to see the total programs that we have, and understanding that there's very little ability for us to, in some of these things, there's very small margins, with it being very heavily labor-associated. There's very small margins of reducing things down and shaving these off. So we had to be very creative in trying to find resources to eliminate these really, really large deficits. And make no mistake, a big part of that was because we saw a real uptake in our, our two main revenue sources for the general fund, that is property tax and sales tax. Both of those, as we would expect in this economy with inflation, we saw increases in both of those two big funds. That was a big part of helping us close this structural deficit. The other piece that we used for the decision process, so it wasn't all just new revenue. When we were trying to decide, how do we find, where do we reduce services tactically, strategically, reduce some of those services so that we can do these new important things, and that we can actually reprioritize towards what the strategic plan is telling us are the top priorities? We've been putting in place over the last two or three years, some new tools that helped us make these decisions, and help our community help us make those decisions, give them the, the levers and the language to help us use their input to adjust this very large budget that has to do so much in ways that really get it, move us forward without sacrificing important things that are vital for us to continue. Priority-based budgeting is a program that we've been using for the last several years, and that we added layers to. Priority-based budgeting allows us to actually score our programs across all of our budget against the strategic plan. So there's systems that give points to each of these programs, and allows us to say, how much value for the dollar investment are we getting for the key performance indicators that are built into the strategic plan? So those data points are a tool. It's a guide. It's not absolute. We don't just hit a button and say, there's your budget. There's a lot of things that you'll have to do. There's a lot of things the community will want us to adjust to. Certainly, there were hundreds of hours of conversation around programming that isn't just, what does the numbers say? But this is an important piece, that the best practices around the country, the communities that are doing this hard work, are using this kind of a tool. And so I'm proud that we're progressing that through, in probably our fourth or fifth year of using this tool. The new piece that we decided to use this year is really a, more of a public safety, public-facing tool. It's called Balancing Act. And what we, we kind of gamify the, the, the application of resources, of competing resources against 105 programs that we've built. So 105 different things that we are saying, programs that we, we do, and the way we deliver services, we built a kind of a continuum of service levels, one through five, and put that into the tool. So each community member who participated could actually say, I'd like to move this service down a little, and I gained some dollars to spend on something that is a higher priority for me. So using that tool, and it's still open, and we hope more community members will engage in that tool, but we had 200 going into the, the critical time, and we needed to program this budget. We had the input of those stakeholders to say, hey, we think you can reduce over here in these specific areas, and we think you should, you can gain over here. Here's how we'll solve the problem to get what we want. And I think that's the reality that you know all too well, and the reality that you gave to me and to our team to give you a balanced budget proposal. This really allows the, the tool for everybody in the community to, to do it the same way, and give us valuable information that we can actually use to do this work together. We also invited some of you to participate in that. We invited our executive team to do that as we started our budget retreat and making final decisions in this budget package, and it was really, really useful. And I think as we use this tool this year, next year, and the following years, and people get a hang of it, I think it's going to be very efficient, and a very efficient and effective way for us to build the community budget that is most useful. And lastly, we used the community survey, which is something we've had in place now for the last three years. And while it is, it is a point-in-time snapshot of community, or community preferences across the services we do, it is a statistically valid tool that we can rely on to say, the community seems to, you know, really be concerned about our roads, for instance, which is true, and we've seen that over time. That gives us a nice piece of information to say, we've got to stay the course. The community continues to perceive a problem we need to address. Likewise, they could be telling us things that, you know, we're, we're quite satisfied in the some area, and that might not be what you would get on any given night here in this room, but the community overall is feeling like, yeah, we're probably okay. So those are important, again, another data piece that helped inform our decisions and build this decision package that is the budget that we've put before you. After the presentation that we just received, I really won't go any deeper on this, other than to say, we did find the money, carved out the money to prioritize this. It isn't enough, as we heard. There's a lot more work to do, but we are on a, a very ambitious journey to continue to do this really important work, and this budget takes the next steps forward in, with the resources that we're allocating. The employee investment, I already mentioned that, those are, those are things that we can, continue to need to pay attention to. We have several collective bargaining partners that we need to continue to pay attention to, and we have continued to do that work, and it helped guide us in what the allocation of resources needs to be to support the people that are doing very difficult The infrastructure that I talked about, I, I want to really highlight here how big a jump we've made, and this is a really telling demonstration, going from the 2020 CIP that was 65, 66 million to 125 million that we are now into, now that we have our plans in place, and now that those, all of those system plans and those, the work that has been done on design, now we really know this is the cost that it is, is taking, plus inflation is built into this as well. But this is a big investment we continue to make in this community, and continues to make. Already talked through the Balancing Act and the way we're using that a little bit. These were some of the things that we got out of this, and we'll talk more in more detail as we go along. But we, we kind of got to a place where we said municipal services, street maintenance, as I mentioned, and planning and housing initiatives. These are two areas that needed more investment, that we heard the community say, through the Balancing Act, put more resources towards these decreases. We, we heard, there were, these were two of the programs that were identified and said, yeah, we think, these are places where you could look for reductions, and so you'll see, we very tactically have proposed decreases in funding in these areas. And those are just examples more than anything, but that's how we were using the tool. And with that, I will turn it over to Allie.
Thank you, Craig. Allie Porter, Budget and Strategic Initiatives Manager. Excited to be here tonight, particularly with our strategic plan, outcome champions, and hope to paint a bright future for our community. As Craig noted, strong revenue growth and targeted departmental reductions have resulted in a balanced budget for 2024. So our economic outlook, all signs are indicating that the economy has largely recovered from the downturn during the pandemic, but uncertainties still continue, high inflation, be prepared for a potential recession, the competitive market for employees. So we do have goals reflected in this budget, being structurally balanced, one of them, maintaining our reserve for our bond rating, and as well as maintaining our commitment to sound fiscal stewardship. Here is a breakdown of our revenues. So you see the 2023 adopted, revised, and then our 2024 proposed. So this increase is the 2024 proposed over the 2023 revised. Property tax, 6%. This contains both real personal motor vehicle, sales tax, those are all our sales taxes, so sales and use, and TIF and TDD, franchise fees, licenses and permits. You see the drop in intergovernmental, so we're seeing a decrease in federal dollars in 2024, charges for services, fines and penalties, interest miscellaneous, pretty much everything else, and transfers in. So overall, a total increase of about 9%. And again, these are our best projections in July for 2024. So looking at our assessed valuation that the county provides, we're about 1.4 billion, which is roughly an 8% increase over the previous year. 2022 over 2023 was about 12%. So we're still seeing a large increase, but not as large as the previous year. While we're discussing assessed valuation, also wanted to note revenue neutral. We're scheduled our revenue neutral rate hearing for next week, but what this is, is the mill levy required to raise the same amount of property tax revenue as the prior year, using the current year assessed valuation amount. So our assessed valuation has gone up, so that a mill levy rate would need to come down. Again, this is provided by the county, 30.711. And so if we did support revenue neutral, then we would need to reduce our budget by roughly 3.58 million dollars. In addition to property tax, sales tax is another primary revenue, particularly for the general fund. So you see that 8% increase that we are projecting over the 2023 into So our general fund is the primary operating fund for the city. You see the allocations here. These are roughly what they were in 2023 as well. The big difference is planning. I believe in 2023, they were around 5% of the general fund. Now they are 8%. And again, this is due to that increase in housing initiatives. So breaking those numbers down, the 2023 adopted and the 2024 proposed increases there. You can see that all departments are increasing, except for the office of the city attorney, and general overhead is also decreasing as well. So overall, 105 compared to 115 for 2024. Again, planning and development services includes 3.1 million for housing initiatives, so you see that 57% increase there. So as Craig noted, this 2024 budget really focused on reallocating our resources and attempting to align our spending with community priorities. So you'll see decreases in some areas in order to see increases in others, utilizing those three tools that, that Craig So I'm going to actually hand it over to our outcome champions, I believe started by Derek, to discuss how this budget will move the various key performance indicators.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. I'm Derek Rogers, Director of Parks and Recreation, and the outcome champion for unmistakable identity. I'm sure you've all seen our, our statement that embell, is what we are is unmistakable identity, but I kind of want to talk to you, you know, a little bit in a little different way about how important this is. And we've been in this strategic plan now for a little over three years, and this is really important, what we do. Lawrence is widely recognized as a welcoming community that embraces arts, celebrates diverse cultures, and offers a vital cultures, and offers a vibrant downtown experience. The city parks and our recreational opportunities and community events play a significant role in fostering this vibrancy and creating a sense of belonging for all residents and visitors. The city's support for cultural diversity is reflected in events and festivals that celebrate different traditions, foster cross-cultural understandings and appreciation. Overall, Lawrence's commitment to community engagement, parks and recreational opportunities, cultural diversity, and the arts creates a welcome, welcoming and inclusive environment that is enjoyed by all individuals who visit or call Lawrence home. So let's take a look at what we're increasing our investment in under our outcome area. Our intention is to enhance the vibrancy and identity of our community by increasing investment in community events and improving the streetscape. This strategic decision is aimed at positively impacting key performance indicators that reflect resident satisfaction, cultural celebration, and enhance environmental sustainability. Environmental sustainability is a priority for our community. We aim to increase the number of events that promote environmental sustainability in 2024. We hope to educate and inspire residents to adopt an equal-friendly lifestyle. By focusing on these key performance indicators and investing in community events and streetscape improvements, we are dedicated to creating an unmistakable identity for our community, a place where residents feel satisfied, engaged, and proud of a cultural heritage while fostering environmental stewardship. In our proposal, we are suggesting minimal reductions in the following programs: Eagle Bend Golf Course, Cemetery Levy Management, Trails and Open Space, Urban Forestry and Right-Away, and Prairie Park Nature Center. By maintaining these programs at a minimum level of reduction, we aim to ensure our community continues to benefit from the services and amenities they offer. In the budget proposal, there are no plans to lay off any current staff members. However, when certain positions become vacant, we will not refill them. While these changes in the service levels may not be immediately noticeable, it is recognized that the reductions in service levels in the long term may become more noticeable. These programs, these programs play a crucial role in shaping our community's identity and contribute to the overall satisfaction of residents. They provide recreational opportunities, preserve our natural resources, maintain the beauty and functionality of our urban environment. By ensuring minimal reductions in our urban forestry and right-of-way program, we continue, we can continue planning, removing, and maintaining our trees to foster a healthy environment tree canopy. This not only benefits the environment, but also contributes to the quality of life of our residents. By prioritizing and maintaining these key programs, we strive to sustain the high levels of satisfaction among residents and uphold our commitment to environmental stewardship. We recognize the importance of these programs in shaping our community's unmistakable identity, and will work diligently to minimize any disruptions to their operations and our services. Thank you. Strong welcoming neighborhoods.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jeff Crick, Planning and Development Services, the champion for strong welcoming neighborhoods. And you're all very familiar with the theme of strong welcoming neighborhoods, which is for all people in Lawrence to live in a safe, functional, and aesthetically unique neighborhood that provides opportunities for healthy lifestyles and access to affordable housing and services that help them thrive. As part of our reevaluation of things, we looked at was increasing the investment in affordable housing and homelessness. And quite truthfully, I could not add much more to Leah's superb presentation that she hasn't already touched on in that regard there. But we do believe that this will move the needle on strong welcoming neighborhoods, which with the point in time homeless count, we do believe that will have an effect on that item. Other thing that we took a look at was trying to find a way to continue our work in engaged and empowered teams as part of our commitments to how we do the work as, as planning and development services, but just also in the work that we do generally. And this is to look at ways that we can improve the efficiency of having more staff time on the primary work. So having planners do more planning work, having our housing initiative team really work on those different initiatives they have. And as part of this, we are recommending the performance of a planning and development services analyst. This role would kind of take some of that workload and some of that burden that we have on staff that may be more administrative, more clerical, or maybe just be one of those added-on roles, and really dedicating someone to do that data analysis, that visualization, to help us meet the citywide commitments of having transparent and accessible information, but also just being sure that we also meet the responsiveness of what we hear from, from different staff on having that data readily available, easy to understand, and throughout just all numbers are available. So we also expect this role to have an opportunity to look at our processes and find ways to do improvements. So evaluating our permitting process, evaluating the way that we handle applications to make sure that we can get through efficiently and effectively through all the different review steps that we have. So this is really that kind of support to help the staff really focus on the work that they're doing upfront. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Safe and Secure.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Fire Chief Rich Llewellyn, one half of the Safe and Secure Outcome Champions, and I'm joined by Police Chief Rich Lockhart to talk to you about our Safe and Secure Strategic Plan area and how that, how that interfaces with this year's budget or next year's budget, this year's budget development process. So you see what our goal is, that we're a community where all people feel safe and secure, and they have access to trusted public and community-based safety resources.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So what we are doing is we're looking at relationship building with our priorities this year. So one of the first things that we added was extra money for overtime foot patrols downtown. We saw positive results with this last November during the holiday season. We're working on building relationships with not only people who are shopping, but also our business owners. And it really made people feel a lot safer downtown, and it created to a real effective use of our folks' time. Staffing wise, we don't have enough folks right now to be able to do that on an assigned basis, so we're doing it on an overtime basis, and this will allow us to continue to do that next year. The other area we're focusing on relationship building is our SRO programs. So we added two SROs to the program, so we've got one at each high school and one at each middle school. They're doing an outstanding job. I'll have an update on their efforts this past year for you next week. But they do things like our police camp. We have two sessions of that. We'll have a second one starting tomorrow, and it's for kids that are a little bit younger, eight to 12 years old, I believe. But it gives us a chance, this, we did two of them this year, gives us a chance to meet those kids and their parents in a way that's not involving police action. So it's a real positive experience for the kids, positive experience for the parents. So they're going back home, and they're telling their kids about these nice police officers they met and this stuff they learned about how to be a police officer. And then our school resource officers also did a teen police academy this week, so we focused on our high school kids. And super successful, again, we had about 12 kids that went through that. And again, it gave them another perspective about law enforcement officers, and it also allowed our officers to connect with them on a deeper level. And then lastly, we're participating in more community events. So we were at the Pride Parade, we were at every parade, actually, this last year. One of the things that we've started doing at some of these community engagement events, we discovered it kind of by accident. So Lieutenant Grady and Officer Harvey, I'm sure you're familiar with them, they took it on theirs, themselves to wear cool sneakers to the Pride Parade, and it was a cool hit. So they were there with their Jordans, and what we found out is that that's a way to connect with kids that we didn't even think about. So the, we had the basketball event at the high school, same thing there, went in sneakers. So at Juneteenth, most of the officers there were wearing some cool sneakers with their uniforms. So it's becoming part of our community engagement now, so I've got to go out and get some myself. I don't have any, I'm not that cool, so I'm going to have to take one of them with me to make sure we get the right ones.
It's not in the budget.
Oh, it's not in the budget? Okay. Misregard. Yeah. I'll have to take that out of my own budget. But that's the kind of neat stuff we're finding out as we're getting out there and starting to relate to folks. Another really important thing, we added an officer in with our victim witness coordinator to help follow-ups on domestic violence, stalking cases, things like that. That was really a need that we were not fulfilling as much as we should be doing. They're getting near completing the, what's called a lethality assessment. It's a series of questions that we'll ask survivors of domestic abuse when we go on the calls, and it grades on a scale from one to 10 about how likely they are to be killed in the relationship they're in. So the higher the lethality assessment, the more urgent the intervention, and these cases are very tricky to get successful interventions, and it requires multiple times to go back and keep trying and keep trying. And hopefully, we can get to a point where we are intervening before something serious happens. And the lethality assessment will give us one more tool when we go to courts or advocates to try and get an increased amount of services for those who are suffering from domestic abuse. And then the key performance indicators, it mentions one there, but it actually hits three different ones, so KPI, one, eight, and nine. And we think that this will provide some very effective influences on our KPIs. And I'll turn it over to Deotro Ricardo.
LDCFM, we're focusing next year on investing in our team. We had some interesting discussions and challenging discussions through this budget process. We were able to identify funds and enhance our services that we deliver internally, including areas for enhanced medical screening. These are screens that look for cancer, which is the number one killer of firefighters. We wear our bunker gear to protect from, from flames. We wear our air packs to protect from bad, bad air or lack of oxygen in buildings, but oftentimes, what we end up coming out of the building with or going back to the station with is carcinogens that we can't see, they're not readily there. Sometimes you can see them, it's to sit on someone's face, but other times, you can't see it. So the leading cause of death for firefighters is cancer. In the last 10 years, I've had five colleagues that are either current or recently retired die of cancer. It's, it's out there, and it's, it's pretty pervasive in the industry. This will allow us to have screens that may catch early cancers that, at the point, they're still treatable, so people can go on to live long lives after the occurrence of cancer. We're pretty excited about the ability to offer that to our personnel. Another area where we're excited for next year is enhanced education tuition reimbursement. One of the things that I was presented with when I came to Lawrence was the opportunity to better prepare our, our staff and personnel for the challenges that'll face them, both in the future and their current jobs, but also for the next step that they may take in their career. We've looked at some of our policies recently, and we've, we've been working to rewrite those to introduce enhanced formal education requirements that show up at an earlier part in people's career, earlier point in their career. We weren't funding those. We, we actually had, had a requirement that we wanted for people to have a bachelor's degree, but we weren't funding, helping them pay for the bachelor's degree until they already had the job that the, the bachelor's degree was required for. So it was a little bit of a catch-22. We've changed that policy, or we're in the process of changing that policy, to help people get to through college, through the formal education at an earlier point in their career, and we're able to fund that in, in next year's budget. The other thing that is a challenge that we face is we have a pretty disseminated workforce. We have seven facilities, actually eight facilities if you count our, our training center. It's sometimes hard for everybody to get the right information at the right time that they need. So we're going to bring in dashboards next year that will be in each facility that allows us to push information out to the stations. It might be something as, as innocuous or fun as somebody's birthday that day, so they may be getting some, some birthday wishes from, from around the department, but it might also be a change to a policy, a change in traffic conditions, 19th might be closed, or, or some other street might be closed due to construction. We can have that real-time data out there and available. They'll also be able to see what crews are going on, what calls, and so if another call comes in, they may know that, hey, we're the next up, so we can, we can jump that call and, and we'll get there faster. A couple items didn't, didn't quite make it into the bullet point list, but we'd also like to highlight those. We have funds set aside to continue our LDCFM Family Day next year, and you see one of our employees with one of his kids, or, or maybe someone else's kids, or some, some kid swapping that was going on at this event. And helping out, this, this kid owes spray water, so we really try to emphasize that there were a family that helps our culture, that helps with dealing with some of the, the trauma that we see. And by bringing our families in so they could see what their parents do, what their spouses do, in one case, what their, their grandkid does, is, is helpful, and it allows the families to understand what's going on, what they might have seen the shift before, and, and maybe will help facilitate that conversation at home. That's, that's a healthy environment. And last thing I'd like to highlight is we have funds set aside for an award ceremony. I got invited to the police department award ceremony last year. It was a good idea, and, and we'd like to, we'd like to adopt that idea and run with it. So we're going to have our own LDCFM award ceremony next year. And again, we, we're trying to move the needle on employee engagement, and that's, that's really where we're focused in, in next year's budget.
So we made minimal reductions in these programs for us. It was the Office of the Chief Patrol and Training.
And our, our reductions came out of two budget areas, Support Services and Operations, out of our three.
And we also worked really hard to reduce the service impacts on as much as possible, and we feel like we're able to operate and deliver the service that our community is expecting from us with these numbers in our budget.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Brooke Carmcano, I'm the city's Economic Development Director. I'm also the champion for prosperity and economic security. This outcome, the overarching goal of that is to foster an environment that provides all people and businesses the opportunity for economic security and intentionally acknowledges, removes, and prevents barriers created by system and institutional injustice. Our community succeeds because of collective prosperity and a vibrant, sustainable local economy. So for the 2024 budget, we really, we aim to keep it relatively flat with the 2023 adopted budget. We really did a focus with boots-on-the-ground, action-oriented investments and support, and that to cover basically two overarching goals, which is to increase our commercial and industrial real estate asset base and also create quality jobs. You guys have heard me say this before, but increasing our commercial and industrial tax assets is one of the most effective and efficient ways of expanding our tax revenues and not increasing our tax revenues, but basically getting other players to participate in the pie. And that's because commercial real estate is assessed at over double the rate of residential real estate. It's assessed at 25% versus the 11.5% of residential. It also doesn't have the cost of services associated with it that, that we have with residential. Now, we're a community, we're a university town, and like most university towns, we have a lot of exempt real estate property. I just ran numbers the other day, and we're at 73% residential property assets, 16% exempt, and only 12% that is commercial and industrial. So we're overly reliant on our residential tax base for our property tax revenues, and in order to alleviate that, we need to grow, again, these commercial and industrial assets. So basically, that's, that's one. Both of these, both of these initiatives are tied together, these goals are tied together. Growing the commercial and industrial tax revenue base also not only increases local property, private investment, but also adds quality jobs. And we want to keep those quality jobs here in the city. We want to make sure that they are high-wage, livable wage jobs, so that people can afford to live here. And, but even more importantly is just to have commercial take on additional parts of that pie in terms of our tax revenue generations. This covers, we have 10 KPIs, and basically, this covers all 10 of them, but it really focuses in on the residents and the businesses that rate Lawrence as a good place to work and to do business at, especially targeting, especially focusing in on targeted industry employment growth. We have four distinct industries that we're after: creative services, research and biotech, computers, IT electronics, and green manufacturing, and advanced materials. So those are the four industry, target industries that we're trying to focus in on, and this particular budget... And this particular budget does that. Again, we have not really raised our budget from last year. We've tried to keep it relatively flat. We have shuffled around some funds so that, again, we can focus on having boots-on-the-ground work and some action taking place versus buying additional resources such as software and tools like that. So that's our proposed budget. And basically, like I said, we haven't really increased it very much. I think we did a 0.8% increase over 2023, so very small. So with that, and my presentation's pretty short, I'm going to turn it over to Connected City.
Move this up a little bit. Good evening, Commissioners and the Mayor. So Connected Cities, excited to be here tonight as we continue to work hard to meet the needs of our residents and businesses in the community as it pertains to our efficient and well-maintained infrastructure. You've seen a lot of information presented here earlier tonight from Craig as he was talking about the budget that really shows the intense investment that you, as a governing body, have been making. And so I'm excited to talk about that further with the two areas that we're going to share that we're focusing on this year. So the first area, next slide, I'm not sure who's doing it. Is that me? Ooh, I can handle that. All right, thank you. Is really working on improving our community's transportation experience. When you look at the Resident Satisfaction Survey, it is, the number-one priority is well-maintained streets. And that includes not only our main arterials within the community, but also our neighborhood streets. We really have targeted the following areas, as you'll see here. First is in the area of basic street maintenance, which includes all of our, down to our residential streets, but our connectors as well as our arterials. And then also traffic signal improvements, which the community has had a lot of interest in, and we're really working hard to make those enhancements. The other thing that we do want to note is we're continuing to work on pavement markings. And noted here specifically is for bicyclists and the Lawrence Loop. We have a policy on crossings that we will be bringing forward for all of our projects going into next year, which will help improve that experience for the users who are biking within our community. And we also are really working hard with Adam Weigel, who's not up here with me tonight as part of Connected Cities, but to really improve the experience that folks have when they are seeking to use transit in the community. We have made so many bus stop improvements over the last few years, and they're very visible as you go around town. And seeing what's going in on our new 23rd Street project is also exciting. We are hoping to move the needle in this area, as we were discussing, in the area of the satisfaction for the overall transportation experience. So that leads into this next slide, but that is bike-walking and wheeling, as well as driving, bus, and biking. So when we look at our residents' desires, we also really look at the sidewalks in the relationship to the ADA accessibility. There's a number of ways that we can look at this. I think there's been a lot of really intentional work over the last number of years in this area. We've got basically four key areas we're going to be focusing on. The first is hazard repairs, which, you know, things that come up that are dangerous. We want to continue that program. We also want to really work to finish out and address our ADA reconstruction programs. A lot of those also tie into brick streets and brick sidewalks that are within the community. And we have increased the budget in this area by about $430,000 going into this next year to further enhance that work. And that was some of the give-and-take that you're hearing when you hear others from the executive team say that they've made some reductions. That's one area that we were able to bolster. Another thing that we are also working on is a policy specifically for brick sidewalks and streets, and that we will hope to be delivering in 2024 to you all to consider. Sort of, lastly, on the priority routes, which are noted for ADA, we really do take a data-driven approach to this to make sure that the most folks, within all of our commitments and looking at those who have, you know, resource constraints, have access to high-quality sidewalk connectivity in the community. And with that, I think I'm the last one. Ally, Jeremy, all right.
Very much. Jeremy Wilmeth, Finance Director. A pleasure to be with you tonight. Just have a few more slides to talk about. I'm going to cover the Other Funds section that Craig mentioned earlier. Obviously, not all of them. We don't have till midnight, but we want to cover the big ones. The first one we're going to start with is the Water and Wastewater Fund. This is primarily funded by utility charges, as you can see. We are projecting a 5% revenue projection increase based on the rate model. So this isn't rate-specific. That discussion will happen later this year as we get into the rates. But just a overall general revenue projection based on the ordinance that was passed last year is at 5%. On the expense side, really nothing more to add than what you've already heard. You can see Personnel Services are up due to the Workforce Plan enhancements. Internal Services are essentially flat for the same reason. Really, the only large increase that you see there is transfer out, and that's actually to fund some of those CIP projects that we discussed last month, out of the water non-bond cash fund. So that transfer that you see there, part of that, about $4 million of that is going to the General Fund as the pilot payment for franchise fees. The remainder is going to the cash account, if you will, for the water utility, Water and Wastewater Utility. In terms of solid waste, when we began looking at this budget revenue, we essentially had two competing sets of data, if you will. What we've noticed over the last several years is that not all of the data that we are getting inputs into our finance system are accurate. And so we're going through an audit, making sure that we're getting accurate data that we can then rely on moving forward. And as a result, you will see a change in this fund as we fine-tune those data points between what we think we're going to receive this year and what we think we're going to receive next year. We are showing that there is sufficient balance in this fund. We don't believe that the adjustment will cause that to become negative, but just to make you aware that the revenues in this fund are still being evaluated. There's only a slight increase in this fund in our operating expenditures, and that's really to align with the new solid waste agreement that you all had approved previously this year. The next Enterprise Fund is our parking, public parking fund. This is predominantly the parking lots around town, but also the parking meters that are placed primarily in the downtown area. We're projecting a 10% increase. This is really based on utilization. There's not a rate increase proposed in this budget. We don't believe one is needed based on our five-year plan for capital maintenance of the public parking facility. And the debt service that you see here that's been slowly growing is actually the debt that we've been adding to the public parking fund. I think it began back in 2021 in the Capital Improvement Plan. Essentially, when we first start public projects of any kind, we always use a temporary note so that we can get the cash at a minimal investment rate, make sure that we know what the actual costs are before we go to that long-term general obligation debt. And so what you see there in 2023 was the amount of money that we're just paying in interest on those temporary notes. But in 2023, we actually, just a few months ago, passed our first actual general obligation bond from that capital plan. And so that's why the debt is going up, because now we're going to pay principal and interest, as well as interest on those temporary notes for the years that have not yet been converted. All that to say that this, you'll see this debt ratchet up over the next several years to address all those capital projects that have been funded for the parking fund, beginning in the 2020 CIP, moving through, I believe, last year. The next fund is stormwater, and this is a lot like the solid waste. We want to make sure that all of our inputs are in alignment between the stormwater GIS staff and the utility billing staff. So we'll see some adjustments here. Again, this fund, I believe, has a sufficient balance, that we're not concerned about that yet. But we'll be bringing that to you a little later on. Much like the parking fund, debt for stormwater projects really picked up in the 2021, I believe, CIP. And again, it was all temporary notes. Some of those are now being converted to bonds, and that's what you're seeing here in the debt service, is that shifting to where we're now going to start paying principal on those long-term stormwater projects, as well as the interest for those general obligation bonds that have been issued. Administrative Services, really not much to highlight here, other than I want to draw your attention to the 2022 audited column. The beginning fund balance was a negative $4.5 million. The Administrative Services Fund is still a relatively new fund for the city. When we began that fund in 2019 and then grew it a little, grew it to where we are now in 2020, all of the employees that were in that fund had previously been in a governmental fund. And without getting into a lot of government generally accepted accounting principles, essentially, government employees, the liabilities, like their sick leave, their vacation leave, et cetera, is accrued at the government-wide level, not at the fund level. However, enterprise funds are actually treated more like a business, and so those same liabilities are recorded at the fund level. So when we created, when we moved all these employees from the governmental fund to this new enterprise fund, it created a liability, which then created a negative fund balance. And so you can see that in 2022, we were able to address that. When we wrote the '23 budget, we thought we were actually not going to be able to fully address it in '22, but we were. And so the money that was set aside as a reserve for accrual, if you will, in '23 is not needed, and that's why we don't have that in '24 as well. So apologize that that's the technical side of government, but the difference when governmental funds and enterprise funds is that enterprise funds are actually treated like a business. And so all of the costs have to be recorded, including known liabilities. So all that to say, you'll see that the charges for services, as well as the expenditures in 2024 for internal services in the Administrative Service Fund, have gone down because we've addressed that one-time need for liability coverage. And lastly, the American Recovery Plan Act Fund, affectionately known as the ARPA Fund. This was the fund that really kept operations running smoothly in the General Fund in 2021, 2022. We don't believe that we'll need any of that support in 2023, so all of that money was earmarked by you all in late 2022 for the much-needed supports in housing and homeless services. So at this time, we are just showing the budget with an anticipation that all of that money will either be spent or encumbered in all of those projects that you earmarked the funds for. If, however, that doesn't happen by the end of '23, we'll come back in the first quarter and basically take that unspent money and put it back into the 2024 budget for those same initiatives. So for sake of simplicity, we simply wanted to show that in 2024, none of our programs are sustaining on ARPA dollars. But in the event that they don't fully get spent, they don't go away, we'll just reappropriate those at the appropriate time. And lastly, I just want to talk about the Capital Improvement Plan for just a minute. When we brought the Capital Improvement Plan to you all on June 20th, as Craig mentioned, I thought we had a really good discussion. Moreover, we heard from the community through the Balancing Act, a real desire that we find way, creative ways to not raise taxes, but enhance our infrastructure. And so I think what you'll see, hopefully, through the changes that we're recommending from that presentation on the 20th, that we really tried to address those specific items that were mentioned. We, of course, couldn't address all of them, but we tried to address as many as we could. Just to recap, we had heard that some of the Commission were interested in basically a swap for some utility line work that was going to bring utilities over K-10 and help with westward expansion in exchange for just basically routine maintenance of transmission lines. With the understanding that we will eventually have to find a way to get that into the budget, because when transmission line breaks, they have critical impacts on large segments of the population. We also heard that with the significant investment that the community was beginning to discuss with fire stations, that we also wanted to make sure that we were funding the apparatuses, the ambulances, and the fire trucks. And so you'll see that we have worked that into the revised plan. We had also heard that, a relatively small project in terms of dollars, but we wanted to provide funding for Lyons Park. And then the other one, there was a few other growth projects. They were more expensive in terms of roads. And so while we couldn't fully fund all of that, we did want to try to address what we thought we could, in keeping with what Ally had mentioned earlier. Our commitment to sound fiscal stewardship means that we really want to keep our debt at a manageable level. And while the revenue in the mill levy will continue to grow through assessed valuation, there comes a point where we really need to talk about what is that manageable debt that we want for our community? And that's what this plan is trying to address. So could we add, you know, one more project? Could we fund an additional $5, $6 million? We probably could. But we also want to make sure that we're not completely maxing out our ability to issue debt in 2024, leaving no flexibility in '25, '26, '27, et cetera. So these next few slides are addressing those changes. I believe the June 20th CIP, the five-year value of that CIP was just over, was just under $463 million. The first-year investment in that CIP, the 2024 investment, was $121.5 million. The new CIP that you have before you is actually $480.7 million, so we've added more money to the overall plan. And the first-year investment increased just slightly. It's $125 million now. I would point out that the majority of this increase is actually us looking at some underutilization of sales tax in the Infrastructure Sales Tax Fund, as well as some fund balance in other funds, rather than adding to that mill levy or adding to any potential tax increase. So for the general obligation bond, the largest thing you'll see here, or one of the larger things you'll see here is really a swap. We're buying down, if you will, the infrastructure sales tax for the next four years, $1 million a year from the fund balance, and swapping that out on the general obligation bond side for a portion of the Bob Billings expansion that is needed for growth, as well as the expansion fire station number seven. I believe Commissioner Finkel died, indicated, you know, if we can't afford it in '26 or '27, how about just trying to get it started? We heard you, and so we want to show that. Obviously, not the full cost of that station by any stretch of the imagination, but wanted to show that we're committed to finding a way to work that into our capital plan in the long term. And so in the General Fund, part of this was a recognition that when these stations go online, there'll be an agreement with the county. And so we're essentially recognizing county contributions for ambulances, for the countywide EMS service in the out-years, and we've shared that with the county. Lyons Park, as I indicated, is here. This next one is not an increase, but it was really, the Capital Improvement Plan Committee felt strongly that waiting to start the electric vehicle infrastructure project in 2026 was really putting us in a negative position for all of the grants that are available right now. And so we want to make sure that while we can't afford to start in 2024 with cash, we did one. did want to make sure that we split that project in half. And so the electric vehicle infrastructure in the new CIP is planned to begin in 2025 and continue through 2026. And then finally, the committee wanted to commit the general fund to providing a more sustainable, long-term cash option for street maintenance. As you'll see in the CIP, especially last year and the first CIP, it was predominantly bond-funded and sales tax-funded. And so this is the general fund chipping in, if you will, and making sure that we're really showing that commitment, that long-term strategy to the community that said overwhelmingly in various mediums that street maintenance was a concern. And so to that end, I wanted to say that the original 2020, or, I'm sorry, let me back up. So last year's CIP, the 2023 through 2027, if you knock off that first year and just compare last year's 2024 to 2027, CIP, it was $335.2 million. If you compare this year's CIP 24 to 27 and exclude, exclude 2028, it's 430 million. And so what you see is our commitment to infrastructure, our commitment to the connected city is enhancing, not just connected city because we also have parks as well, but is enhancing by $95.5 million. So we really want to show, you know, our commitment to sustainable, long-term growth of our infrastructure. I think that might be all I have there. So the revenue bond, this is, as I mentioned before, a priority swap for westward, westward growth. This one actually wasn't really discussed. We had hoped to get a state grant for long-term replacement of transit vehicles. Unfortunately, that did not come to fruition. Doesn't mean we're giving up, just simply means we don't have it at this time. So we're removing that from the budget at this time until we can identify a, a grant. And then lastly, the capital sales tax fund, as I mentioned, a $4 million investment is really that swap, if you will, from what was going to be bond-funded so that those bond dollars could then be invested in a growth project on Bob Billings as well as a expansion of the fire station seven. Here, you're seeing an investment in Fire Station Six's fire truck as well as Fire Station Seven's fire truck from the capital sales tax, as well as the $4 million bump to, or swap in street maintenance. So that's it. This is a calendar that just shows you where we are, where we're headed. This is our fourth meeting on the budget. Next week, we'll be back and talking all things revenue neutral rate. It's at that meeting that we'll ask you to establish your intent with the county to either exceed the revenue neutral rate or, or not. If you choose not to exceed the revenue neutral rate, essentially you can ignore the rest of these slides because we've got a different calendar. If you do choose to exceed the revenue neutral rate, then this is our calendar to the end. And with that, I also would like to echo Craig and just thank Allie and her team for all the excellent work they did on this presentation, all of the attachments that you have on the budget. And at this point, we stand ready for any questions that you all may have.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy, and thank you for all the other staff for the presentation. This is quite the production and appreciate the work that's been put into it. So we'll open it up here for the commission. Any questions for staff?
I have a quick one, and it's probably for Chief Llewellyn regarding fire. I noticed on the slide before that you, who is, and I, which by the way, I want to say globally, thank you all for the presentation. I really appreciate it, and thank you all for other department heads for being here. I appreciate that as well. I noticed on the slide in particular that you said no services will be affected in, in regards to kind of the broad cuts that each department was asked to make. But I know that in particular, your reductions were in operations, and I know that initially the importance of us starting work on expansion station six was that we were trying to meet a, need a response time, you know, workload, you know, things of that nature. I was just curious on how you were going to be able to balance the not necessarily continuing the trend that we have before until the stations are actually built. So I was curious on that plan.
Yeah, if I, if I think I understand your question, how do we reduce money in operations without reducing services or, or our ability to deliver service? Where we're at, we, we went through and looked at what we had anticipated or what we had requested in the coming year, and a lot of those were service enhancements that, that we're able to, to dial back. Amongst that was a LDCFM drone program. So we would, we were asking for funds to, to initiate our own drone program. That was an area where we have partner agencies who can come in and help us, whether it's Lawrence Police Department or Douglas County Sheriff or, or even the state. Fish and Wildlife have, have drone programs where they can assist us. So we, we look for opportunities where we, we had resources available to us that we didn't necessarily have to have our own. We look for opportunities where we could reduce spending or look for funding elsewhere. One of those was with some wildland personal protective equipment. We're looking for a grant through the state for, to, to get that equipment here. It's, it's difficult to fight a wildland fire in, in structural PPE, and so we want to have the right equipment for our folks. But if there's another opportunity to, to fund that, we're, we're going to look for that. So that was one area we focused on. Another thing we looked at was maybe stretching the life out of some of our equipment a little bit further and, and replacing them and getting kind of the incremental savings from not, not buying equipment as soon as possible. And example of that would be the utility pickup that we have at Station Four. We, we had that slated for replacement next year. If we stretch that out a little bit, it's, it's still drivable, it's still safe on the road, but we did have that slated for replacement. So we stretched that out a little bit. One area where we didn't reduce was in the, the number of apparatus on the street, the number of ambulances, the number of fire engines, the ladder that we have out there to the battalion chiefs. We want to make sure that we still deliver the service that we, we do today. We deliver that tomorrow and, and next year. We had asked originally for some enhancements to, to positions in order to recognize some of the leave that has been added to the city recently. One of the, one of them was the parenting leave that, that's come into play. We've had 13 people last year that, that utilized that leave, and so that has an impact on, on service as far as the employees who have to, have to come into work to, to make that up. But we didn't get any of those enhancements and, and had to stay within where we're at with our, with our operating budget and found that areas to reduce without impacting service. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, yeah, it does. And I just want to make sure, but we're, we're not without support for, for those folks, are we? I mean, we still have some, some support for them, you know, in terms of, you know, those circumstances.
Yeah, absolutely. We're still buying new PPE. We're still replacing PPE that's worn out. We're still buying equipment that needs to be, that needs to be replaced. We're, we're not, we're not trying to float the fire department along until there's a new station that comes along and we can, we can buy new stuff. We have good equipment. We're, we're trying to maintain it to keep it that way and then replace it as needed. And I think that's in the, in this budget.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Jeremy, I have a question for you. It's probably because I don't understand the enterprise fund, the administrative support fund, but you talked about how we had that negative 4.6 million on the administrative fund, and now it shows we, at the end of 2024, we'd have a 1.85 million. Is that a reserve? Is that, what is, what is that?
That 1.8 is about half of the ERP that we temp noted, the new, sorry, I hate using acronyms, the Enterprise Resource Planning System. It's essentially the finance and purchasing accounts payable system for the, for the city. We borrowed that money on a temporary note. It was a three-year payback. You see the debt services covering a portion of that. We're also have this cash reserve intended for part of that. The, the strategy is that it not actually become a long-term debt, that it would just be a short-term debt. So between that 1.8 million and what we have in the operating budget, we should be able to pay that off in 2025.
And I guess I had a similar question when I was looking at the Economic Development Fund. I think I asked the question, does it have any reserves? And I think the answer I got back in an email was it wasn't a reserve, but there's an available amount to use. I know that wasn't in your presentation. It's a specific fund. I think it's on, where is that? Economic Development Fund, it's on page 81 of the presentation. It shows at the end of the total fund balance of 8,675,733.
Correct. So this is actually the amalgamation of, I think, five or six different funds. There are either tax increment finance district funds, transportation development district funds, or community improvement district funds.
I see.
And so the sum total of all of those revenues in property taxes and sales taxes is 2.9 million. Our planned expenditures, meaning what we believe each of those districts have proven in cost, is 2.8 million. That reserve, that 867 is reserved for future projects that are allowable under those various agreements with those various taxing entities.
Got it.
So none of this impacts the general fund. None of it would go back to us per se. It will all eventually be paid out to developers and other people that have interest in those districts.
Got it. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
I did have one, I think, for Chief Lockhart. There was, I don't think you went into it, the 20% increase to the Humane Society contract. May or may not be really a question for you. For some reason, was thinking their contract was coming up and or into or hadn't really been discussed with staff yet, so I didn't know if you could say more about that.
Yeah, and I don't know, Casey actually helped us with that and finalized that agreement. So do you want to take that one, Casey?
Sure. I guess I would say I haven't finalized the agreement. I think talks are still underway, but what we did program into the budget represents a 20% increase over the funding level that the Humane Society has received from us for the past five years. So you're correct, Commissioner, that that agreement ends at the end of this year, and so we're in negotiations and needed to, to budget a number, and so that's the number that is in our recommended budget.
Does that get it, your question?
It does. So, okay, the, well, then the next question is, when will you be able to tell us how that negotiation is going? Because I think they would have a lot of other questions that aren't good for this time right now, but just, I think it'll be interesting and valuable to the other commissioners.
Yeah, I think I would say there, that the talks have gone well, that we, the Humane Society also had submitted a proposal that was a larger proposal that looked at providing additional services. And just like we had the same conversation with all of our city departments about the levels of services that they're able to provide, we had that conversation with the Humane Society. And so those, those are the talks, I guess, that I'm talking about are still kind of looking at what services are available. And, you know, we have a, an understanding of the level of service that they are able to provide to us for this dollar amount, and we felt that that was the appropriate balance when we looked at all of the other needs that had to be accounted for in the budget.
Yep, thank you.
Other questions?
I had a, I had a couple. Jeremy, on the waste, solid waste and the waste, I think the other one was the waste, stormwater, stormwater funds, they showed, each of those just showed a slight decrease in charges for services from 2023 to 2024. Since we've been raising those rates, is there, what's the reason for that decrease?
Yes, so I tried to hit on that in my comments, that I think we have a, a difference of opinion as to what the, the revenue is going to generate based on the inputs that we're seeing into our system versus what the inputs are for the utility. And so we're still reconciling those differences, but we had to have something to start the budget process, and so this is what we in the finance department felt comfortable with in terms of where we think we're going to end 2023. And then the 2024 projection was actually from the department. So we're going to get together and try to reconcile those differences.
Okay, that's good. Sorry, haven't had a chance to read your email. Came in.
No problem.
Didn't quite get to it at 5:35, so. But thanks for your responses. They were great. Look forward to reading them. Other questions for now? If not, we'll open it up to public comment.
This is all good news. I'm Mark Bueller. Well, I don't know if that's good news. My comments are good news. I have been a citizen around here for a long time, and I've actually paid attention since 1977 when I had to work. So as a Realtor, as a lender, as a public official, and as an insurance person over those years, I want to thank you all for your commitment to the expected growth this community will have one way or another. And it's really good news, and you should be very proud of your staff and yourselves for looking hard at big numbers and making the commitment to help Lawrence breathe a little bit. This real estate market, since I joined it in 1977, obviously very different. The numbers are completely different, but I have never seen in all my real estate brokerage years, I've never seen more pressure on available properties and less opportunity for those that have less. And as a member of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, I care about business. I'm not speaking on their behalf. I'm also on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, taking Ron Gacius's place, who can't be replaced, but having some understanding of those that have less. It, it looks like you're spending big money for certain people, and my point, I guess the point of my comments is you're spending it for all of us. So do it. And thank you very much for your time, your commitment to this community. We need this badly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I, I've, I've brought this up before during budget, but I would like for the city to start paying all of its employees a living wage. The other week, I was looking at some of our job listings, and a head lifeguard starts, I think, at $16, and that's, that's a head lifeguard. That's someone, you have to be at least 21 to have the job. So the argument that, oh, it's a job for high schoolers, that's, that's not the case if you have to be 21. And you have to have like the life-saving skills and be qualified? I mean, that seems like it's a skilled job that we should be paying more than 16 because at the last forum, one of the candidates said that the living wage is a little over 16. And if the head lifeguard's making 16, just, the people underneath are going to be making even less. And we need to start, pay like our, our top, our top positions less. Like, I looked, maybe I'm wrong, but I looked at open payroll where you can look at the payrolls of the city employees. Our city manager is making above average, and he's making more than the Topeka city manager is. So if he's already, if he's already making more than the average person doing his job is, why should we keep giving, like, do a straight, like, I, I don't is, why should we keep giving, like, do a straight, like, I don't know what the raise is, I forget, but like a straight raise for everyone? It should be, the lowest-paid employee should be getting a bigger percentage raise, and the highest percentage, or the highest-paid employees should be getting a lower percentage raise, because they're already making more. I mean, I would just challenge you to look at what our lowest-paid employees are making compared to, like, the average compared to our highest-paid employees. Because I, and also, I mean, six, someone making over $200,000, they can afford to live here. Like, why do we need to keep giving them raises when there are people making less than a living wage who are struggling? So give your lowest-paid employees at least a living wage. Thank you.
Other public comment?
Hello, my name is Kristin Eldridge, and I want to thank you and commend you for going through such an arduous process. As Commissioner, or, excuse me, our city manager mentioned, it's a massive team effort, and that was evident in all of the division reports. I wanted to speak specifically to, in support of the city manager's proposed CIP budget, particularly City Manager Craig Owens and Melissa Seeburn of the MSO Department. And also, thank you for your engagement and listening and addressing some of these priorities. There's some particular areas that are proposed to be funded in 2024 rather than down the road, and those are remarkable. That's the Sixth Street west of K-10, as well as the K-10 and Bob Billings area. For those improvements are, will be, help future development over on the other side of K-10. Water pressure zone, the new tower, and major water mains maintenance to support what we currently have, as well as eventual future expansion. And the fire station number six, support of some of West Lawrence and future expansion. Funding these areas is really forward-thinking and really takes into account the future of Lawrence, so I wanted to thank you for that. There's two main concerns personally about keeping Lawrence a vibrant community, and those are housing. We currently have a crisis. The lack of inventory is driving prices up. And it is also, it's making it difficult to bring in those new commercial and industrial properties to Lawrence if the workforce can't also work there, can't live here as well. Economic growth is the other. New jobs, business opportunities, expand the businesses that we have here now, fill open jobs, foster some entrepreneurs, as well as bringing new businesses to Lawrence. I feel like we're at a critical point, where we're currently at a risk of being an exclusive community, where it's only for people with a certain income that could live here. And it's making things difficult for the people that already live here. I want those people to come here and raise their families and start a business like I did. These CIP budget recommendations lay the groundwork, literally, to assist in both of these areas.
Ma'am, your time's up. Thanks, Kristin. Other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Seamus Albritton. I'm president of Lawrence Professional Firefighters. There's a bit of dichotomy of feelings that we have towards the recommended budget. On one hand, we recognize the commitment written into the CIP to address the desperate need for additional fire stations, to maintain coverage for all our citizens. However, we are disappointed to see that staff is not recommending to fund the full-time positions needed for fire medical to address our current staffing crisis, which is our inability to staff our existing fire stations. Friends, our workload and emergency calls have increased over 70% without increasing employees. This increased work has led to wear and tear on our people. Instances of injury and illness are up, and our people are beat down and tired. On top of this, the department is completely dependent on overtime to ensure that we have enough people on duty every day to staff ambulances and fire trucks. Use of overtime has increased 39% since 2016, much of which we cannot fill on a voluntary basis. Instances of increase, or instances of forced overtime of employees has risen 655% since 2016. That averages out to just over two employees are being told every day that they cannot go home, call a babysitter, or cancel your weekend plans with your family. At the moment, it is very often that if someone needs to take leave away from the job, it means that another member is forced into staying at work. What is the point of having leave programs if we can't hire enough people to allow us to use them appropriately? What is difficult to understand about these positions that were recommended to solve this issue is that the fire chief has done his homework. A study has been done. We've put our data against industry standards, and we know we're understaffed by about five or six people. So what we need you guys to do is to fund those five positions that were asked for by the chief. We need you all to trust the science and data that is related to running a modern fire department. We need you all to understand the importance of allowing employees time away from work so that their existence can be beyond their professional obligations. We need reasonable assurance that when we promise our children that they'll be at our, we'll be at their T-ball games or their dance recital, we don't have to break that promise, because City Hall has different financial priorities. And most of all, we want to, we want you, we want us to be a city that hires enough firefighters and paramedics so that we can safely and consistently perform to the level our community deserves. The type of people that sign up for this work have better natures and are prepared to make sacrifices for their community. I'm asking you to celebrate that and not exploit it as we have in the last couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Odessa Shorter-Harty. I'm a long-term resident of Lawrence, particularly East Lawrence. And I am really happy that you guys are looking at the budget and you're looking at issues that, streets and sidewalks and things of that nature. Living in East Lawrence, the brick sidewalks, the brick streets, really, really need to be addressed. It seems every year, 23rd Street is torn up, redone, but then some of these outer areas are not addressed and have gone neglected for a number of years. And I, being a resident of these areas, I would like to see that trickle down to those areas. Also, one of the things that we're seeing with the lack of housing in this community is the fact that, as an owner and an occupant of the home that I own in East Lawrence, I would like the option of having a secondary granny flat on my property. I would like to have the opportunity to age in place. I would like to be able to responsibly have a unit on my property that wouldn't be a nuisance to anybody else, because I would be living there, I would be responsible for that unit. And the fact that it would have to be a low-income housing forever, that really isn't fair, because if I'm depending on that income to survive in my elder years, it couldn't be, it could not be a low-income housing forever. So I would like the right and the ability to provide for myself in retirement and stay in place and stay in Lawrence. Thank you for your ear.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ron Gacius, and I'm here to support the changes that have been recommended by the city manager to your capital improvement budget for the next five years. I'm particularly interested in those recommendations that have been made for infrastructure, utility investments, that will assist with the future development of new residential neighborhoods and perhaps even new commercial space here in our community. We desperately need the housing. There's not a lot of discussion anymore about what the needs are. We still are looking for solutions. Having more lots available is an essential first step. And unfortunately, most of our infill lots, the best ones, have already been snapped up the last couple of years. And we're now looking at properties for infill that are less and less desirable, smaller and smaller lots. In order to meet our housing needs, in order to provide some price stability in our marketplace, we really do need these expansion opportunities, and I urge your favorable consideration of those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment on this item from the audience? Not, we'll go to Zoom?
Robin Richardson?
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Rob Richardson with the EDC. I'm in charge of the, making sure all of our, all the opportunities we have with Panasonic are taken to their full advantage in terms of industrial and housing development. So I've been working with the staff and Mr. Finkeldey on issues that would help support new housing. It's, I think it's very important that this is looked at as part of the housing puzzle, if you will, to make sure that we have a robust housing policy in Lawrence that supports everyone from the top to the bottom. When you take one part of that away, or one part of it isn't working, the rest of it suffers, whether it's someone that doesn't have a home that's suffering, or someone that wants to move up and buy a bigger house and open their home up to a new family that can, that wants to buy their first home. This whole market needs to work together. And I think that the infrastructure projects that are placed in the CIP to help foster some new housing development are critical to the future of the city and how the housing market works as a whole. It will help stem the tide of rising house prices. It's not going to correct that market, I don't think, but we, hopefully, we will see the sharp increases drop slightly over time, and more housing be available, and have more houses on the market, which will help supply the demand in the market. When that market gets tight, the prices go up, and then people see their taxes go up because the housing prices go up and then the values go up. There's a lot to this, and I think that the CIP that the city manager and his staff have put forward is a great first step in providing sewer water and streets to fund new development that will provide a wide variety of housing choices for folks in Lawrence, from affordable housing to luxury housing. It's all part of your market, and it all has to work well together. So thank you very much, Craig, Melissa, Brad. And I would just ask that if there are changes made in the development side of the CIP, that you would just let us know so we can work with you all on that. Appreciate it very much. Have a good night.
Any other on Zoom?
That's it?
That's it? Okay, we'll bring it back up to the commission for...
Yeah, it is. Sorry.
That's it? For any other further discussion on this?
A little thing. I know, sorry. It's still little. The young lady who brought up the brick sidewalks, I wasn't going to bring it up, but in their letter, the response that we got from staff, cool, although they did forget to answer the question about the guidelines and when the guidelines will be available. So, okay, cool.
Sorry, could you, what was that? Come on up here. Yeah. Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa Seeburn, Director of Municipal Services and Operations. Commissioner Shipley was referring to the policy regarding brick sidewalks and streets, and we will be bringing that to you in 2024.
Do you have an, in the first half?
No, not in the first half, but we are working towards it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
But also to clarify for the public, that money has been budgeted, or we're in our suggested budget here.
Yeah, okay.
And not only respond, we're working on a new development code that might allow ADUs.
That's what, I was going to ask you that, but maybe not now.
I guess I'll just make a few comments. Obviously, thank you, Craig, and Casey Brandon, and Jeremy, and Ally, and all the leads for putting this budget together. You know, having the structurally imbalanced budget the last couple of years, I know it's been harder on you guys than us, but it's been something we've been worried about. And I know the mayor has in particular, you know, expressed that concern, and, you know, to get to a point where we're going to solve that is impressive. You know, second, I would, I would say that I really appreciate, you know, all the staff working together, you know, to fund the right priorities. You know, last year, I think, when this budget came up, we had a few more people in this room. And maybe that was because, you know, in part, we focused on one program instead of spreading that out. So I know that work is not easy, and so I appreciate everyone working together on that to fund the right priorities. You know, the four big priorities of employee pay, infrastructure, housing, and closing that gap, you know, all the, you know, obviously, that's what, is it our strategic plan? And so, goes without saying, I support those. Those are things we need to do, and I appreciate us getting there. I guess my one, my one question and concern, and I guess, if I don't know, this is for Chief Laurel or Craig, I think I understand that the request for the five additional firefighters would be funded 360,000 by the city and about 203 from the county, I believe was the numbers I saw. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
I guess maybe the first question, I read what was in the paper about going, going to the county commission meeting, and they maybe had more money set aside in their original budget otherwise. But if either of you had, if we were able to find a way to fund a portion of that, what's the perception of what, if the county would be interested in funding their share of that? Has that been a discussion anyone's had?
I haven't had that discussion.
I haven't had that discussion either, but we definitely want to talk to them as soon as possible, because they're deep in their process right now as well.
I did gather from the newspaper, and obviously you were there, that they might have had some money more in their original proposed budget than you're asking for. Is that a fair representation of the discussion?
Yeah, I believe that they had our original budget that was submitted to the city. We developed it, submitted to the, to the city, submitted to the county. We worked through the city's process, and then, and then we were going to the county to talk about where we were at with the city's process. And so there was, there was a timing issue that occurred as far as the budget development processes for both the entities. And so that's, that's what they were working off, was our original submission to the city.
Well, I guess I would, you know, I certainly, you know, I hear what the firefighters are saying about their need for some additional staff, and we know that with the, you know, the extension of Fire Station Six and Seven, we're eventually going to need more staff. And so I'd be, you know, the balancing act would tell, would say I'd have to tell you where to take it from. But I'd be interested in at least looking at that or considering that and seeing what the county's interest was in some level of that. And just exploring that as we walk through this process.
I'd like to add, I appreciate you saying that, Commissioner Finkeldey, because that was, obviously, my questions of the chief. That was my hesitancy and something that was concerning me as well. So I appreciate you saying that, because I would be on board with that as well. But yeah, to circle back, I want to commend everybody for putting this together, you know, and addressing our, you know, structural deficit, as, you know, it's, that's quite a feat in itself. And I really appreciate all the hard work over the couple of years, the last couple of years to go ahead and address that. And I think we were well on our way and well down the path we need to go on this. And I know it's, initially, it was a heavy lift in infrastructure-wise to go ahead and address some, some things that have been long neglected. But I think that as we continue on, we will get more to the maintenance side than actually the more new project side. So I'm encouraged by that.
If you need a third voice to say, please consider the addition of... If you need a third voice to say, please consider the addition of the necessary or requested positions, FTEs for the Fire Department Act, that, that gives you three.
So thank you again for the budget, all the work that's been done on it, and I really do appreciate it. So I want to give a little bit of perspective from where I come from, since I've been on the Commission a while. When I first got on the Commission, we didn't have a capital improvement plan. We did not. And in fact, I went back and I was looking to see, when did we first do our five-year? And it's about 2018, somewhere in there, finally. We did that, and that year, for, for 2018, we, we had a one-year capital improvement of $54 million and a five-year of about 275. Now, we're almost doubling, we're getting close to doubling that. So we've really come a long way on infrastructure, and that's something that's been really, is something that I've really tried to emphasize and pushed for and begged for. And what, what we're doing this year, which is even different than what we did last year, is we're targeting. I think we're doing a better job of targeting based on the, what's going on in our community. And I think that's very important that we continue to do that. I appreciate that very, very, very much, and, and the continuing emphasis on, on infrastructure. And the structural imbalance is something that has, Commissioner Finkelde brought up, you know, every, the last two years when I've seen that, it's just made me gasp. I mean, when I looked first, I'd go, oh my God, what are we doing? So I, that's another big one for this budget that I think is, is wonderful. I thought we'd be a couple more years out on it, I really did. So the fact that we're doing it this year and we're continuing to increase our CIP is just an amazing feat. We're, we're stretching it, and I think that's, that's not a bad thing to do. We need to continue to stretch it and, and work towards these goals that Lawrence needs and Lawrence wants. So thank you very much.
Mayor, do you mind if I ask Craig to maybe comment on, maybe not specifically the particular job listing that Citizen Flowers noted, but, but broadly on the work that staff has been doing for several years in terms of getting pay aligned for all the, all the staff, but as well as balancing that with unions and all that? Could you pay compression and things like that? Can you talk briefly about that?
Well, you just hit all the words. So in 2018, another key year, a study was done. We brought a nationally-known firm in to study our pay and see how we were in the market and how we were spreading dollars across different classifications and for different types of jobs. That, that reality was, sat there for a few years, and we didn't really adjust to that reality until the last two years. As you well know, we've funded $10 million of increases to get us up to what 2018 study said we needed to be investing in. So that put us in a much more competitive market situation. It addressed compression, which is the definition of sometimes somebody supervising an employee is not making, is, is, is very close in pay to that person. So we're asking for higher levels of job complexity and duties and responsibilities in supervision, making sometimes a very close amount of those that they're supervising. And, and that's just one example. So we, there are a bunch of things that needed to get corrected amongst that. In some cases, it was that we had, you know, collective bargaining groups that had been negotiating for pay and others had not been treated the same way. And in some cases, some of the higher-paid staff were not compensated very well or competitively, and we did see an exodus of some employees that the market fixed that situation. So I'm, I'm very proud of, this is, this is not a, a very unusual pay system. We have a very traditional pay system, but it's well-funded, and it will continue, as long as we maintain it, it will continue to do what we needed to do. We do have additional collective bargaining groups that we're negotiating with now, and we've started, you know, have new agreements with them, and there's others that we're just now getting our first agreements with. And those are still influenced by market conditions and market pay, and our existing pay system helps guide our decision-making in that process as well, and making sure that all of our employees, whether, whichever group they're in, or if they're, whether they're not in a group, that they're being fairly compensated. So I think we have made tough early investments, and now it's just up to us to continue that pay. As to the living wage, I actually pulled it up here. I don't think we're far off according to the data I see here. And what's interesting is all of us who enjoy the pool and would like to be at the pool a week or two earlier in the summer, and would definitely like to be there a week or two later, understand that the, you know, the example that Mr. Flowers mentioned, we, we just simply cannot find the talent. So our pay has increased significantly to try and pull people in, and I, I think that would be my response to the living wage. We will be looking at it, yes, of course, we want to do that. We have, you know, almost 900 people, plus all the part-time employees that are part of our community, and we're talking about affordability and how can people live here? And those are people that we're really paying attention to as well. Did I cover the bases you were looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioners want to add? Nope. Well, thank you very much again, and this is just a, a receive item, so we don't have a vote on it, obviously, right now.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the next. All of our regular agenda items have been taken care of. So we'll move on to Commission items. Any Commissioner have any Commission items?
Uh, yeah. Thank you, everyone. I, I was just curious, I know that, that County is working on the Climate Action Plan and the Open, Open Space Plan, and I was just kind of curious where they are with that. I'm not sure, but when they get to a place that they can discuss it or present, I would like to us to block out some time to go ahead and, you know, receive that. So I just want to make sure that it's top of, not necessarily top of mind, but in our purview, so. If that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
That's good, that's good. Any, any other Commission items? I have one. I would like to see if there's any interest on the Commission to bring back the plastic bag issue to the Commission.
Yeah?
Not surprising.
Not surprising. Yeah, kind of lost track of that last month, so...
Not your fault.
We can do that. So I appreciate that. That's it, that's all I had.
Just a follow-up on both of those items. So I think we will, when the plans from the County are done, that we would invite somebody from the County to present those here so we can have some discussion and be informed by the, so sometime within a couple of months of that being adopted. Okay. And then on this, shall we bring back the same ordinance that was considered, and in what timeframe would you like to do that?
I'm, I'm okay with the same ordinance. If, if there's some changes, then that's fine, but I'm okay with that.
Fine with me.
There's three votes there.
Okay.
Can I do it sooner?
We, we probably want to give some word to the community, so I would say the first couple of meetings in August, you've got a couple of things coming forward at that time, but we could certainly do that.
Okay.
Either the, the first or the eighth?
Um, either one of those would be fine. See how, how the schedule starts to load up.
Okay, so it'll be one of those two dates, and we will update you at the next meeting of what it looks like that's filtering out to be.
Okay.
You can just put it on the future and decide what's...
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. That's all for Commission items, and we'll go on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you. These are some, the one is a follow-up on a discussion we'd had on just kind of giving you some information and research that we had on the Neighborhood Revitalization Act and the Rural Housing Incentive District. So that's kind of a follow-up to our information request that you had made a while back, I think. And also then the, the item about the expansion of the Low-Income Elderly Utility Rate Program, another one that was a follow-up of some interest that the Commission had shown. So we're happy to talk about it now, or if this prompts you to want to schedule it as an agenda topic, we can certainly do either of those.
Okay. Any thoughts on that?
I was curious about the latter. The rural, I mean, just reading the memo, it kind of sounds like the NRA is, what we were intending to address might not work as well, but the RHID, it seems to hit a lot of the same spots of previous infill spots that planning had addressed. So I'd be interested in learning about that.
Okay. I think I'd like to review the memo a little bit more.
Okay.
More detail, and then decide from there.
Okay, so we'll wait for a Commission item maybe to re-prompt?
Yeah.
Action?
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. Any, any other questions for Craig on the City Manager's report? If not, we open this up to public comment on this. Any public comment on the...
This is Chris Flowers. I was, I just have a question about the SB 180, I think it's on the City Manager's report. I was just wondering if staff is going to look at the ordinance against topless women and like what that means for our ordinance? Also, have you all thought about what constitutes an adult business? Like if a, a transsexual man was a lifeguard, would they be allowed to work with their shirt off under, like, right now, I believe they would be able to, but if, if the state says they are a biological woman and our, our city ordinance says that if a woman's working without her shirt on, it's an adult-oriented, oriented business, does that mean a life, a transsexual male could not work without a shirt on as a lifeguard? I would just like the city to be looking at this stuff since it, it could potentially affect some of our transsexual members, especially the ordinance against topless women. I, I think that the law is going to make it so that a transsexual man can't go without their shirts on in town. So I would, I would like the city to be looking at that when they're looking at the SB 180. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
Hi, I'm Fallon Lewis. The last time I was here about the SB 180 situation, there were some comments that were made in here that were very disheartening by people in the community. One was that the, the health and welfare and safety of trans and non-binary people were not important enough to, to be considered and dealt with by you folks. And one lady even referred to us as trannies, so that was very disheartening. But tonight, I just want to say thank you to all of you for moving forward with the ordinance against SB 180. It means a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment on this? If not, we'll go to Zoom.
Michael Allman.
Can't hear you, Michael.
Oh, there, I'm unmuted.
There we go, there we go.
Okay, sorry. Michael Allman, speaking for myself, regarding the, the second item in the City Manager's report, the expanding of the utility rate discounts. When Commissioner Sellers brought that up about a year ago, I believe it was, she was interested in finding and identifying and including new demographic groups to, to include in this program. What you see before you tonight doesn't do that. It simply talks about the same elderly and low-income demographic, which is good. I mean, I fall in that category myself, but if, if the, if Commissioner Sellers, as myself as well, were interested in expressing desire for new demographics, I brought up the fact that potentially low-income, but any urban food growers, whether engaged in community gardens or backyard gardens, that the irrigation rate is probably the biggest expense for growing your own food, to the extent that oftentimes, it's just not worth it. It's not worth the value of the produce. So I really want to express a hope that going forward, new demographics, particularly urban food growers, will be included in this program. And that's all I have. And, and I'm kind of surprised that this came back when Commissioner Sellers is not here because it's her proposal, and she, you know, that's just very surprising. So hopefully, you can bring it back with a more robust kind of definition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jamie Miller.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me. I'm Jamie Miller. I'm a representative of no SB 180, and now that we're at the proper point in the meeting, we want to express our appreciation to the City Commission and all of the city staff members that are in collaboration with us to develop the, to develop a safe haven ordinance protecting the rights of transgender citizens. And so we just want to express that we are very appreciative of your time and the efforts that everybody is extending into this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
That's it.
Review the calendar items as next. Anything on there that we need to note or add?
I noted, I think, August 22nd needs to be added to the calendar as a, I think, our potential City Commission meeting. It's the fourth Thursday, I mean, Fourth Tuesday in August, but I think we need it for the revenue-neutral date, so just put that on. It's in the future agenda items, just not on the calendar.
We'll get that updated.
Yeah. Okay. Any other items?
Month.
Not?
I've got a few that we didn't. I'd move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? 4-0. Did everybody say yea?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. Let's adjourn.
Double aye.
What day did you just say?